Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners for Pinellas County, meeting of January 22, 2019. We're glad that you're here with us today and certainly welcome you here. We are very honored to have one of my favorite people here as to give the invocation. It's Pastor Bill Lasassa with the New Path Community Church out of St. Petersburg. And Pastor Bill, please come forward. Everyone, please rise. And then the invocation, I mean, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Justice.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Father, thank you for this beautiful county in which we live and for the greatest team of commissioners in the whole country. And God, today, we're asking that you'd help them govern, as if they're hearing directly from you, and help them enjoy their job. Wouldn't it be great, God, if they actually had fun today? My gosh. And then, tonight, when every one of us goes home, wouldn't it be wonderful if we each sat in our chair and said, "Our county is better off tonight than it was this morning because of that meeting." God, you can help us do it, and we're asking, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Bill. Okay, we have two presentations, and I will come down and present.
For our first proclamation, I am particularly happy that Pastor Bill Lasassa is with us this morning, or this afternoon, because he and others have worked very hard in the human trafficking. And so, our first proclamation is about Human Trafficking Awareness Month proclamation. I'd like to ask Paul Valenti and Jeffrey Lorick from the Office of Human Rights, and Doug Templeton, Jason Omen, and Jim Clark from Consumer Protection to come join me here at the podium. They will be accepting the proclamation on behalf of the citizens of Pinellas County. Thank you for being here. Good afternoon. It is far too easy to believe slavery to be an incident of bygone eras, instead of today's reality for millions of people across the world. The United Nations Global Report on Trafficking of Persons for 2018 reports that human trafficking has increased 38% since the United Nations first started collecting and reporting such data in 2007. The Human Nations Global Report on Trafficking of Persons for 2018 also indicates that 70% of the victims of human trafficking are women and girls. As a consequence, the majority of victims of human trafficking are trafficked for the purpose of being forced into unspeakable acts of sexual abuse. Florida consistently ranks as one of the top states to receive calls and tips through the National Human Trafficking Hotline. And victims of human trafficking in Florida are, come from all corners of the world, including China, Thailand, Vietnam, Mexico, Brazil, Costa Rica, and Micronesia. In March of 2016, our county commission enacted its own anti-human trafficking ordinance to help combat this terrible evil. Pinellas County Consumer Protection continues to inspect adult-use establishments, massage establishments, and specialty salons performing nail services under this ordinance to ensure that they comply with the ordinance notice and posting requirements to provide information and hope to those who may be victims of human trafficking. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that the month of January 2019 be recognized as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And I find this very sad, that we have to have a proclamation of this type. But through maybe our efforts, we will help to combat this horrible situation going on in the United States and in Pinellas County. So, to further talk about this, today's proclamation, of course, was drafted several weeks ago to ensure it being placed on today's agenda. And many of you probably heard, but just one week ago, the St. Petersburg Police Department, acting on a tip from law enforcement in Louisiana, arrested seven people on suspicion of human trafficking. When effectuating the arrests, the officers discovered two teenage males in a mobile home and being kept in an unspeakably horrid conditions of squalor and filth. The St. Petersburg Police stated that one of these victims had been lured to Pinellas County through an online gaming community by promises of a better life. Instead, he was subject to almost a year of sexual exploitation. We commend the St. Petersburg Police Department for their efforts in combating this scourge. But this board believes it's vital to recognize that it happened here, in our county, in 2019. Our board has taken steps to combat human trafficking, and we will continue to do what we can to end this plague and help its victims. And we encourage people to contact law enforcement or the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 1-888-373-7888 if they suspect or they are victims of human trafficking. And later today, I recently met with a group about human trafficking, and later in our commission meeting, I plan to introduce this information to see if there's additional ways that we can work on ending this in our county and doing an even more proactive job. So, I thank you for listening and with your hearts agreeing that this is something that we all need to end immediately, as fast as we can. Paul?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just simply, I can't say it better than Chair Seal already said it, other than, from our perspective, the first priority for folks that might be victims is to become safe. Get in touch with law enforcement and become safe. There are some ancillary issues that relate to human trafficking, though, that our office might be able to help with. If you're singled out because of a protected basis, your sex, you referenced the incidence or rate at which women and children are subjected to trafficking, your national origin, targeting on those protected bases may allow you to file a complaint with our office, the Office of Human Rights. And oftentimes, people are forced into unpaid labor, and this board has also passed a wage theft ordinance where if people have engaged in work for which they've not been paid, our office might also be able to provide some assistance. But I don't want to detract from the good work that my colleagues from Consumer Protection are doing, and I'll certainly offer up the microphone to them.
We just want to say thank you for the board's support. Jim Clark is our regulatory investigator, is out there weekly, and he goes out into the community, works with the businesses to educate them on the requirements, and when necessary, helps to bring them into compliance. So, we appreciate it.
Well, we thank you for your due diligence and efforts to help in this regard, and really appreciate it. The next is a very important issue as well, and it is Sleep Baby Safely Year proclamation. From my service on the Juvenile Welfare Board, I'm very familiar with their work and the Preventable Child Death Planning Team. They first launched the Prevent Needless Deaths Campaign, and given the rise of babies dying due to unsafe sleep in Pinellas County over recent years, they've recently launched Sleep Baby Safely. I'm especially impressed with all the partners who support and champion this campaign, including several divisions of Pinellas County government. With us today are many of those partners, which will fill the room, about 35 people. I would like to ask Linda Leedy, who is the Chief Administrative Officer from the Juvenile Welfare Board, and all the rest of our partners with us today to join me at the podium. They will be accepting the proclamation on behalf of the citizens of Pinellas County. And, you know, it's really interesting. I think everything is always important to each and every one of us, but I have a granddaughter now, who's 14 months old. And so, when they did the presentation at the Juvenile Welfare Board meeting, I was one of the first ones asking a lot of questions, because certainly, babies sleeping safely have changed over the years, you know? And I think all of us who have been mothers or grandmothers can remember how you've seen these changes. You know, for instance, no longer do you put bumpers around the crib, because those are hazardous. And now, you place the baby on the back versus the stomach. And so, it's amazing how research and horrible, you know, happenings or experiences or deaths have created better conditions and more knowledge for our mothers today. So, after, see, I told you. And doesn't that tell you the whole story, that there's so many caring partners who are really working hard to make a difference and to prevent any childhood deaths? According to the CDC, about 350,000 babies in the United States die from preventable sleep-related deaths each year. Every month in Pinellas County, healthy babies suffocate while sleeping unsafely, making it the number-one cause of preventable deaths for children under 18. Over the past 10 years in our county, more than 100 babies have died from sleep-related suffocation, which equates, oh, this is like, it's bad, which equates to nearly six empty kindergarten classrooms of children. The Juvenile Welfare Board has convened a group of Pinellas County leaders to create Sleep Baby Safely, a campaign based on local data that features direct language, undeniable facts, and easy-to-remember tips. Campaign partners have adopted and are committed to using a consistent set of materials and messaging which identifies the cause of death as suffocation, not sudden infant death syndrome, known as SIDS, but this is based on data from District 6 Medical Examiner's Office, which has not determined an infant sleep-related death as SIDS in nearly 20 years. This and other safe sleep facts, tips, and a public service announcement can be found on the campaign's new website, sleepbabysafely.com. As you can see, dozens of partners have now joined the campaign to protect babies from suffocation every time they are laid down to sleep. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that 2019 be recognized as Sleep Baby Safely Year. We're now going to have a public service announcement video that we would like to play. This PSA was a partnership between St. Petersburg Fire Rescue and Juvenile Welfare Board to support the Sleep Baby Safely campaign. Please roll the video.
Every month in Pinellas County, a healthy baby dies while sleeping unsafely. The cause of death is suffocation, usually from sleeping with a parent or somewhere else In fact, when a baby sleeps somewhere other than an empty crib, the results can be deadly. I know this all too well. I've seen way too many babies die from sleeping unsafely. And the tragic thing is, all of these deaths could have been prevented. Don't risk it. Don't let this happen to you.
The safest way for babies to sleep is alone on their back in an empty crib. Learn more at sleepbabysafely.com.
I hope that the PSA and all the efforts of this campaign will truly make a difference in preventing these needless deaths. Linda, where are you?
Amongst the crowd. Thank you, Commissioners Seal, Commissioners. JWB is honored to represent this committed group of partners as we deliver the simple, safe message of Sleep Baby Safely. We have over 70 partner agencies that are working together to get this message throughout the county. Just this year, we have developed a Sleep Baby Safely Welcome Baby Bag, which was delivered to every single parent that gave birth in a Pinellas County hospital this year. And if I can just show you, my personal favorite part is the onesie that says this side up. In case you forgot, this is how the baby goes.
And then, it's being down, now they swaddle more than they used to.
Our first responder partners in Pinellas County EMS, Sunstar Paramedics, St. Pete Fire Rescue, Clearwater Police, Largo Police, and the Pinellas Sheriff's Office have trained over 2,500 of their own, so they can deliver direct, on-scene, safe sleep education. And the Healthy Start Coalition rebranded and expanded its Beds for Babies program, and they are now providing pack-and-place to every family that needs one, that does not have a safe place for their baby to sleep. All these efforts collectively are working. We have reduced the number of infants reported deaths this year slightly, and we hope to continue that trend in 2019. So, thanks to all of you for your support, all of you for your hard work, and thank you again.
And Pete, if you could show what's on the podium, that would be appreciated. These are some of the materials that are being used for this campaign, and I'm glad that it's already making a difference. Thank you, each and every one of you, for being here today and for working in this very heartfelt issue for so many people.
We're trained.
Yes.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Check my class.
All right.
One more.
Okay.
One, two, three. Thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have a partner presentation. I would like to ask Lariana Forsyth, the CEO of CASA, to come up. And welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you and your colleagues do.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for having us here today. As I was introduced, my name is Lariana Forsyth, and I am the CEO of CASA. We're a domestic violence organization in Pinellas County. People are often familiar with our shelter. We run a 133-bed shelter. But what we're really interested in doing, besides providing those services, is really talk about prevention in the county. Pinellas County has the fifth-highest number of domestic violence cases in the state of Florida, so it's really a big issue here. And we want to have this conversation in a way that people are minimal to having the conversation. It's not an easy thing to talk about. There's a lot of confidentiality issues. There's a lot of victim blaming and things like that that goes along with domestic violence. So, we were looking for a different way to have a conversation in the county and how we can work to prevent it. So, we approached our friends at USF St. Pete and asked them to conduct an economic impact study for us. We have the results here today, and our friends are going to give a presentation on those findings. And then, I'll pass out a little collateral that goes into, a little bit more in-depth to share that information with you. So, we have Dr. Harris with us and Dr. Wrightgelt, both from USF St. Pete.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. So, as Lariana said, she approached us about a year and a half ago, or about a year and a half ago, to talk about this, to put the costs of domestic violence into some dollar figures, which sometimes does not feel comfortable for us. We don't like to quantify the unquantifiable or the intangible. But please recognize that if we don't, we end up saying that these costs are equal to zero. So, we try to put a number on things, just so that we remember, we need to value these. And you'll see, as we go through the study, the importance of it is really to think about all of these different components of costs that impact us, not just direct victims of domestic violence, but also all of us as a society. So, as Lariana said, it's a partnership between USF St. Petersburg and CASA, which we're really honored to be a part of. And here are the cost categories that we mentioned. See what you can see. We set out to fill numbers in all of these slots here. And on this part of the slide, you can also see who bears those costs, that is not just the victims of domestic violence. It's not just their families, their friends, but it's also employers. It's also our judicial system. It's also our whole economy in terms of job, time on the job that's lost. And then, there are also some long-term costs that impact the victims themselves, as well as, of course, our healthcare system. So, what we did was, we listed out all the potential costs that we could envision that are related to domestic violence, both looking at academic literature, popular literature, and just things that we thought would be very important. And we met as a group on a regular basis to fill in those blanks. We only base it on reported incidents in Pinellas County in 2017, which, as you can see on your sheet, is over 6,000 reported cases. And of course, we all know that many more, seven or eight times more incidents of domestic violence are not reported. We consider that we've probably underestimated the data, in large part, because people don't always admit that, "Oh, I broke my leg due to a domestic violence incident," or there are other things we don't realize, "Oh, the emotional problems I'm having are related to an incident that happened maybe years in the past." And of course, there are the measurement difficulties that I mentioned already, that some things, pain and suffering, how do you measure that? So, we try to at least list out all the costs to highlight that these are costs, even when we couldn't quantify them. And here's what we did come up with, that domestic violence in 2017 costs the county $132 million, or about $21,000 per victim, and you can see how that breaks down. And I just want to run through a little bit of the components in each of these categories, and then, if you have questions, of course, we'll be happy to answer them. The housing includes emergency shelters, so our friends at CASA, for example. Damage or lost supplies. And the crime scene cleanup refers to the homicides. There were eight in 2017. Healthcare costs are primarily medical care. Of that 5.6 million, about $3 million is related to medical care, with most of the balance being mental health care. But we also included some administrative costs. The community costs were very big, as you saw, $80 million. That includes lost productivity at work and at home, so even the value of victims' work in the home, whether it's cooking, cleaning, taking care of children, we wanted to include that, because that's a very high value. Not just costs at work for the victim, but also the perpetrator. We included the cost to foster care system and law enforcement protection and court cases. And I'll just give you one of the elements of the lost days of work. This was for the victims. You can see that we estimated the average number of days of work missed, and then put a value to that at $7.9 million in wages. We did a similar estimate for the lost days of work for the perpetrator. We also looked at the cost to the employer, because I'm sure you know, if you've managed people, that if someone doesn't show up, there's a cost to that for you as the manager, trying to reshuffle work duties and so forth. And then, we also included the cost of lost productivity at work. If you're being harassed, or you're just distracted because of a domestic violence incident, we wanted to account for that as well. The foster care costs, we included by estimating that about 10% of children in foster care are there because of domestic violence, and we were able to get a cost on that. The community costs, you can see, are quite high in terms of law enforcement protection and court cases. The bulk of that is from police officers' time responding to domestic violence calls. Support services, I'll list them out for you here, so you can read them all, and a lot of these are, again, offered by CASA. And just make sure that everyone's aware, they don't just shelter, but they also provide training and assistance. The long-term costs, as you can see, we tried to think about a lot of them. Only the ones in bold were the ones we were able to put an estimate on, which we assume is an underestimate. And the first bold one is the lost lifetime earnings due to premature death. As I mentioned, there were eight homicides in 2017. And so, the earnings that those victims would have earned had they lived to the average lifespan. And then, we put a cost on pain and suffering as well. And now, we're trying to delve into how we can get some of those other elements that are missing. So, that was a lot of numbers, but I think the takeaway is for you is that this really is our first look at the cost of domestic violence in the county, and that these are conservative costs. We didn't want to say too much if we weren't 100% sure, but again, wanted to highlight a lot of these elements. And it at least provides us with a starting point, with an estimate of the magnitude of the cost, and a lower bound estimate at that. And again, we highlighted all of the impacts that domestic violence has on our community. So, thank you for your time, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much for the comprehensive report and the research. It's kind of, again, it's sad, but at least we have a, we can wrap our arms around it and know how your good work at CASA and other places are helping women and children.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. If I could just make one more comment.
When we decided to do this study, we could not find any examples of a local study looking at a county. So, this is really one of the first of its kind. USF St. Pete will rerun the data for us in 2018, so that we have some clearer projections in the next year as well. So, thank you so very much.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I had lunch today with the folks at RCS in Clearwater, at the Haven, and they're seeing the same kind of numbers and issues that you brought up. And those of us kind of who see this information a lot understand it, but it's still a lot of folks, when they hear domestic violence, their view is very microscopic. And for people to understand the impact it has on the community is important, so I appreciate your good work.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
I want to echo Commissioner Justice and thank you all for putting this data together. It reminds me of the Impact of Poverty report that we did a few years ago, and I thought, "Oh, gee." I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
And I think when you quantify it, it reaches people in a different way. Folks that might not have been attentive to the issue. When you put it in numbers, I think it makes a difference. So I want to commend you for your approach on this. And what is your next step now that you have this initial data?
Well, we have talked about rerunning the numbers in 2018. Again, because there was no study to base this on, we did find that there were a lot of holes, one being that we only analyzed the 6,228 reported cases. Statistically, there would be 44,000 cases in Pinellas County. So how to really start to quantify those cases that aren't necessarily reported, that if we don't intervene and don't have proper education and prevention programs in place, they will at some point turn lethal.
And you envision it something you take back to funders or broader community groups?
Absolutely, absolutely. And to your point, Commissioner, some people talk in stories and some people talk in numbers. And this is just another tool in the toolbox to really talk about the issue and bring light to it. We don't talk about domestic violence. Even the media will talk about murder-suicides. They don't call it domestic violence. So it's really raising awareness about the issue in any way that we can.
Thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our next partner presentation is brought to you by Commissioner Charlie Justice. And last year, we had a very pleasant surprise at one of our meetings. And so I subsequently asked Commissioner Justice to help in this regard. It is called "The Pure Pinellas Portion" of the Pinellas County Commission Meeting, and it's a surprise every meeting. We know that Pinellas is a unique, special place to grow up, live, work, play, and retire. This segment will reflect that quality of life and provide a taste of Pinellas for commissioners and for those in attendance here at our meeting and/or watching. That taste might be something about our history, a constituent with a unique background or talent, a local artist. But whatever the topic or presenter will be, you can be assured that it will be #PurePinellas. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And your segment that you just read is the perfect introduction. And I don't want to take a lot of time away from our presenter, but we know that there's things that happen in Pinellas, that are created in Pinellas, that have worldwide impact. But we may not realize that as a local. And so today, we're fortunate to have Mr. Michael Jones, who is a retired boat builder and volunteer at Heritage Village, who is going to tell us a little bit about some of that specialness in the history-making that happened here in Pinellas County. Mr. Jones, welcome.
Thank you very much. And thank you for this opportunity to talk about Heritage Village and particularly the boat shop. Some of you may already know a little bit about the history of the boat shop, but it was a grassroots movement to, because people wanted to donate boats to the Heritage Village, and we had no place to store them. So, and it all centered around one particular boat builder, which is Clark Mills, who was the designer of the Optimus Pram, which is universal now. But a lot of people do not know. People that grew up in Pinellas County even don't know the real start of it. So the boat shop is different because it is a new building in Heritage Village. It isn't one of the historic buildings. And its purpose is to tell the story of the Pinellas maritime history, which is very deep. And of course, we were primarily a fishing and agricultural community early on. So everything centered around the water. And if you grew up here, everybody you knew was on the water a lot. So, but, and these are some of the boats that are all related to Clark Mills and the purpose that the driving force between, for building the boat shop. But what he's really known for is with this group of men, that in 1947, the Clearwater Optimist Club, and in particular Clifford McKay, Colonel Clifford McKay, came to Clark Mills and said, you know, around the nation, everybody's building a soapbox derby. We're Florida. Nobody's rolling down hills in Florida. Let's build a little boat that can be built for $50. Father and son can build, and they get out there and sail it. And so they talked, the Optimist Club, and they're doing it. They went to community sponsors. He built a fleet of these little boats, and it took off. And in today's terms, it would have been gone viral because Clearwater built a fleet, Dunedin built a fleet, St. Pete built a fleet, it went across to Sarasota. Shortly thereafter, a man from Norway saw the boat. He took the designs back to Norway and spread worldwide. It would be hard to overestimate the impact that this little boat has made on the world of sailing. And I think it was the 2012 Olympics. 80% of the Olympic sailors learned to sail in Optimus Prams. There are fleets in 126 nations now. There are over 400,000 boats worldwide that are registered to race. That does not include all the ones in someone's backyard, ones that a father and son built. And the impact on lives, not just on sailing. I've had one man tell me that the Optimus Pram saved his brother's life, gave him the direction of course. And in 2017, Clark Mills was inducted into the Sailing Hall of Fame. And this was a direct result of the network of people we did in fundraising to build the boat shop. And then, and some of the members that are already in the Sailing Hall of Fame that were connected to the Optimus Pram, learned to sail in them. They were the driving force to recruit there. And I think he was in the first 100 members in the Sailing Hall of Fame. The other importance with Clark Mills is that he's a central character in the boating community in Pinellas County. He moved here about the time that Pinellas County became a county. And so when you talk about the boating community, you don't have to go to six degrees of separation to get to Clark Mills. It's usually two or three. So in the 20s and 30s, John Hannah was a designer out of Dunedin. And he was known as the sage of Dunedin, nationally known. Clark Mills grew up down the street from him. You had the St. Pete Havana Race. So as Clark Mills was growing up and as many other sailors, they would crew on these boats. And that's part of his training for doing that. I see my pictures disappeared, but, but, and Clark Mills was a mentor, not only to me, but to many other sailors, including Charlie Morgan. And the picture, I don't have to point it here, in the corner there of the sailboat, the contemporary one, that was the first fiberglass boat to be competitive in ocean racing. And Clark Mills partnered with Charlie Morgan doing that. Let's see. The sponge fleet, there's a lot of history in Pinellas County about boats. But Clark Mills was a, is a good person to start with, to go in all directions from that. He designed the boats that compact builds. There's a number of those boats, which is the, and it was at the start, while he was not building fiberglass boat, he influenced a lot of people that built the fiberglass boat. So the whole fiberglass industry of boat building in the 70s and 80s is a direct result of that. So that's a brief summary, as brief as I could make it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And for us to, yeah. More people in the world have learned to sail on a design that was created in Clearwater Beach with the Clearwater Community Sailing Center and the Rotary Club of Clearwater Beach, Mr. Mayer. And I think that's pretty cool, pretty special, and pretty pure Pinellas.
And thank you for your support of Heritage Village.
And thank you for all of the hard work in creating this special place at Heritage Village and a place to display this wonderful sailboat. And to all the other volunteers, I know that pitched in and helped you in so many ways.
It's an enormous volunteer pool that really is.
It was huge.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Okay. I thank you all for, I'd like to ask Rui Ferraris to come up and to speak to you about a cultural exchange with Lincolnshire, England. And you each should have received last evening, I emailed it to you. I had just met with Rui this past Thursday. And I understand he may have met with some of you all, but I just thought we would bring it to everyone's attention and have a presentation and possibly a discussion. Thank you.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Rui Ferraris. I'm the Executive Director of the St. Petersburg Museum of History. And like Madam Chair said, the reason I'm here today is because of a relationship that we've begun with Lincolnshire, England, and their cultural aspect of their tourism department. We started talking to them some time back specifically about the St. Petersburg Museum of History. And it has grown from that point to a situation now where it could be county-wide. Lincolnshire is similar to us, other than they're a lot colder than we are. But they're a coastal community that relies a lot on tourism, but they also have a tremendous amount of manufacturing. What they do have, though, we get excited here. My archivist, our collections manager, when we find something from the 1800s, we get all excited, and we go crazy over it. Well, they're digging things up from the days of the Roman Age and the Saxon kings and all that good stuff. And they have a tremendous amount of wealth there in artifacts and in art and in glass that they want to share. So in Lincolnshire, in the city of Lincoln, is Lincoln Castle and Lincoln Cathedral, which basically are two magnificent structures that act as museums. And inside those structures, like I said, they have a wealth of different artifacts, like for instance, Roman glass. And they were interested in our area because of our arts culture that has grown over the years. And in our conversations with them about some of the documents and some of, for instance, Lincoln Castle is home to the Magna Carta and some other documents. So in our discussions of what they have and how we could build this relationship with Lincolnshire, like I said, it's grown to now look at a county-wide arrangement. So we've been quickly talking to other cultural facilities around the county. Everybody from Heritage Village to Imagine Glass, to MFA, to the Holocaust Museum. You just go right down the list. I've spoke to the Seminole Historical Society. We want to include everybody in this because of the possibility. We're just opening the door, the possibility of what can happen here. And we've been looking at it just from the cultural aspect. The gentleman that we've been dealing with, his name is Counselor Colin Davy. He is primarily a county commissioner from Lincolnshire. And now he started talking about an economic impact and an economic relationship. And, you know, that's an area where we're going to let the professionals deal with. I deal with all the old stuff. So we're really excited about this. And what they're really looking for is to build some sort of relationship with Pinellas County, for lack of better terms, as a sister county, where we can start looking at doing an exchange of cultural ideas, cultural items. Like for instance, you know, world-famous Duncan McClellan is arranging to go to Lincolnshire to do glass exhibits. Imagine Glass, which has one of the largest collections of art glass in the world, is looking at building an exhibit to send to England. You know, I've been talking to a couple of other museums about what we could build as a Pinellas County exhibit to talk about our heritage and history to send there. Because as you know, we get a lot of British visitors here during the year. So we've seen this as an amazing opportunity. And their goal, their focus, is to build a relationship between Pinellas County and Lincolnshire. And what I have up here is just a letter that was sent to England that basically is the start of an inquiry of how we can start this. Like for instance, the Museum of History has already signed a memorandum of understanding with them on some of the artifacts and items that will be arriving here in January of 2020 that we will have on exhibit. I know that there are other places, like the Morian, for instance, which is also signed in MOU, and the Holocaust is looking at one. And they have, like I said, everything from Roman glass to they're one of the official repository of the RAF and a bunch of World War II stuff. So their history spans centuries. And they are the caretakers of that in England and are willing to share it with us. And we want to share our artifacts and our story with them. So this is what was sent to you that I'm presenting now. And on behalf of the Museum of History, I mean, we're excited about this relationship that we're building with them. And again, hoping that it does reach county-wide along the way.
So one of the questions that came up was, would there be any cost to Pinellas County? And could you answer that?
Absolutely, the answer is no. And even like, for instance, museums, like my museum, we bring in, even though we are, our mission is to tell the story of St. Petersburg and Pinellas County in the state of Florida, we do bring in traveling exhibits. Like we have an exhibit right now that deals with, it's called Forgotten War, about Korea. It's a photography exhibit. We pay for those exhibits. And some of these exhibits can run from $5,000 to $500,000, these traveling exhibits. The items that they're talking about bringing to us would come to us and to the other cultural facilities at no cost for the exhibit. We would have to cover the transportation costs, as we would for any traveling exhibit, and insurance, which we would for any traveling exhibit. So they're willing to share this at no cost to us and the other facilities here. But to the county specifically, no. There is no cost whatsoever. They just want to explore a relationship between the two counties.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Walsh?
I have a couple. Thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing this to us. I'm supportive of moving forward and getting more information on this. One of the questions, of course, was, does this cost us anything? But I have a few other questions. Maybe we can get our staff to take a look at it, and perhaps economic development, the TDC if it's possible. But is this an exclusive arrangement? Does it preclude us from having other sister county relationships?
No, not at all. It's not exclusive at all in that nature, no.
Why the rush? And why didn't they come to the county directly? Just those kinds of questions.
It almost kind of, it snowballed. Like I said, it went from a discussion of a particular exhibit that we have been trying to secure for the Museum of History to everything else that they had. And one of the administrators, the counselor that was here, traveled throughout the county and, you know, went to the Botanical Gardens and Heritage Village and visited all the museums. And the light bulbs, I think, just started going off. This could spread into a much, much larger relationship than rather than just one museum.
And this request is from Lincolnshire County, is that?
Yes, it is. Lincolnshire is a county.
So it's basically from their chair?
Correct.
Okay. Because we don't have anything
Right.
on their letterhead or anything.
Exactly.
That I'm seeing.
Right. And this is, again, this is what came to us the other night from England that I shared with.
I'm open to the concept, as long as we fully vet it. I'd like to get some more information on it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And it's not particularly precedent-setting because, you know, we did do something with the St. Petersburg Yacht Club years ago with Mexico. Do you remember that, Commissioner Walsh?
Right, Regatta.
Ela de.
I can't say it.
De Muñoz, I think it was.
I do remember it, though, yeah.
But I mean, it is something in the whole broader context of things that maybe we should have a discussion. We've never, I was approached several years ago about doing like sister counties. And, you know, I think there could be, maybe not just looking at this, but looking at the program overall to see if it's something that, you know, we would want to engage some other counties and other places. I mean, we're starting to do more international trade missions to increase business. And, you know, this might be a simple way of doing that. I mean, certainly, the cities around in Pinellas County all have sister cities, numerous ones to, and, but anyway, Commissioner Justice, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we've talked a little bit about this a few weeks back. And I was under the impression that we were kind of under a much, even tighter time gun than we, I guess, are. And I did reach out to staff a little bit and got back from our economic development that it was a, to do a traditional, I don't know what this is, but to do a traditional sister relationship is a pretty arduous process of paperwork, et cetera. I don't know. But that was kind of a little bit of the response I got. But like Commissioner Walsh, I'm very open to it. If it's a general concept, that certainly doesn't seem like any harm. If it's expected for us to, you know, send representation, then that gets into our CVB priority budget-type stuff. But as far as the general concept, I think it's worth looking at.
Okay. And why the rush? Let me explain. The commissioner from Lincolnshire is returning home at the end of, by January 30th. And like I said, this just came, we just met this past Thursday. And so even exchanging phone calls and email messages, they originally were planning a press conference this morning. And I said, well, I cannot go and represent the county in this regard without you all weighing in on it. So I know we can't get this completed before your, before the commissioner departs. And I'm really sorry about that. But it does at least bring it to the entire commission so that, in a very hasty manner, which is not typically how we do things. And so with that, Commissioner, did you?
Yes, I have.
Is that the one that they converted the footage from the original footage?
Peter Jackson, yeah. And it was like they were right there, just amazing.
Commissioner Eggers, and then Commissioner Walsh?
Yeah, just, you made the comment that many of the cities in the county have sister
Yeah, just, you made the comment that many of the cities in the county have sister city relationships, and they vary across the board with how much involvement there is, how much exchange of people there is. And really hadn't thought about it as it relates to the county, and I think it's a great idea to look into. I certainly am not supportive of doing something today with that, with you all, but I certainly would love to explore the idea with your county, but also maybe broaden that a little bit and see what other, I guess, criteria or spheres that we want to look at to mesh with, whether it's cultural, whether it's economic, whether, whatever it might be. I think it, I think it's got some real possibilities, so.
Commissioner Long?
Yes. I'd be very interested in hearing from the gentleman that you spoke with, Commissioner, what that partnership or relationship would look like from their perspective. And since I know that there is a lot of precedent for this type of arrangement, I'd be curious how our staff might get some additional information for us about opportunities that we might not even be thinking about today.
And in that regard, I'll try, I know there's a sister city organization here in Pinellas County that I met with several years ago, and I'll try to find them again and reach out and see, you know, if they have some criteria and some guidance to offer as well. So I have not met with the Commissioner from England, Commissioner Long. I have not met with him. I have just met with Rui.
Oh.
Who brought this form.
Okay, well, whatever.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you very much all for your time.
Please give our sincere thanks to Lincolnshire, and we will be working on this to see if we can make this all happen.
Great.
And thank you for, I know you've been spending countless hours trying to, trying to work on this, and why this became a Pinellas County item was because, as you can see, they went beyond the borders of St. Petersburg to try to bring, you know, this throughout the county, which I think is very cool. You know, this kind of likens back to when Creative Pinellas was born, our local arts council that was a not-for-profit, was that there would be some significant events that would go countywide, that would highlight our county, and that would, you know, be something really cool, and this might be one of those events that we won't have to do the work on. Anyone else?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull?
Move consent.
Second thing. A motion by Commissioner Long and second by Commissioner Gerard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are we doing the
Are we doing the
voting thing? Are we doing the voting thing?
Yeah, we are, I'm sorry.
It takes some getting used to.
I was just thinking of my last meeting where it was ayes and nays.
It's a little easier sometimes.
We can bring up the voting cards, please.
Oh, sorry, I didn't get, I'm a yes.
I keep thinking that Whitney joined me.
I joined the meeting, but I didn't really join.
Your vote was up.
Huh?
Your vote was up.
Okay. Didn't push anything. Okay. We're onto the regular agenda. Item 16.
Item 16 is a request from the City of Clearwater for conceptual approval for staff to engage and review the Category E Tourism Development Funding Plan application and begin negotiations related to spring training facilities for the Philadelphia Phillies. Approval for staff to engage at this point would be in accordance with the Capital Project Funding Program guidelines. This would be to review the application, enter into discussions and negotiations with the city, and bring back to you a recommendation regarding funding and terms for an agreement from the tourist development tax funding. And we do have representatives from the city and the mayor.
Mayor Kretikus.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Welcome, or wel, no, I'm welcoming y'all. Glad to be here. In the invocation, the Minister spoke of the team of the county commissioners. Well, I want to bring up my starting team. I have with us Councilmember Dave Albritton, Councilmember Bob Cunda, Councilmember White Hamilton, Councilmember Jay Poglay's. I have our city manager, Bill Horn. I also have, from the Clearwater Thrashers, John Timberlake, and from the Philadelphia Phillies, John Nicholas. He's the chief financial officer. If you will notice, there are nine of us. There are nine members of a baseball team. In the dugout, we have Jim, and Kevin, and Mike. And in the stands, we have thousands of people who love baseball, who come to Pinellas County because spring training is the home of Pinellas County. The Phillies have been coming to Pinellas County since 1947. Only the Detroit Tigers have spent more time in one city than the Phillies have spent here in Clearwater. And, you know, baseball has changed a lot since 1947. But what hasn't changed is the Phillies' organization. It's not a conglomerate. It's not a big business, even though baseball is a big business. The Phillies are a family organization, and that has permeated and grown over the years here in Clearwater. And they treat us like family when we go up to Philadelphia, when they come here for spring training. They don't come here just for a day or two in the middle of the night. They come here from early February and stay until the last day, from the chairman of the board to the backboard. They're here. And Pinellas County in Clearwater has been their home. And so for that reason, we're coming back to you today to ask for some assistance so that we can get started with this process of asking for TDC money, but more importantly, for today, asking the state for assistance, because you know that there's some money available from the state that can help us with some renovations that we want to make at the Spectrum Bright House Field. And with that, I'm going to be a rookie, because I've never used these little clickers, so bear with me if I make a mistake. We have just a brief presentation to make for y'all and then take some questions if you have. This is, again, as I say, to give us conceptual approval so that we can go forward, to ask the TDC for money, to ask the state for money. And that's what we're requesting from you today. The City of Clearwater is seeking this approval so that we can make some renovations to Bright House Field. The Phillies and the city have already agreed in principle to a term sheet to get this done. And now we need the assistance of the state and the county. Since Spectrum Field has opened in 2004, the Phillies have made a capital investment in this field, the city has, and so has the county. We opened that facility in 1967, and the Phillies' contribution has expanded. And most importantly, something to keep in mind, any cost overrun that we've had at that field with any agreement that we've had with the Phillies, they have taken care of. And that's what's going to happen with this agreement. Any cost overrun beyond what we're asking and what we will agree to with you will be met by the Phillies. I don't know that we've done that with any other organization, and that's the kind of relationship that we have developed with the Phillies and the county over the years. Also, we need to keep in mind that while we're talking about the Phillies, Spectrum Field is a community asset. It is owned by the City of Clearwater. The Thrashers, the minor league team, has led the Florida State League in attendance for 12 years. This last year, over 200,000 of our citizens have gone to baseball games at Spectrum Field. We have other events there, including the Clearwater High School graduation, the Hops for Hospice. With the county, we work to bring the American Athletic Conference Baseball Tournament here, and we're also looking at doing some softball events there that will help us use that facility even more. And Boobash is one of the highlight Halloween events in the entire county. All of this takes place at Spectrum Field. The improvements, you know, unfortunately, baseball fans are different now. Baseball players are different than they were even 15 years ago. So the fan goes to the stadium now more than just to watch the game, and I don't know, Commissioner Walsh, you and I probably are the only ones who probably go and still keep score, you know?
That's a compliment, right?
Well, yeah. I mean
That's service, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Right.
And people don't do that as much now. You know, they pull out their cell phones and they chit chat, and they Twitter with each other and whatever. But this is the kind of experience that we need to make some upgrades to feel, and this is the assistance that we're looking at, to give you that same experience that you have at Tropicana Field and the major league fan wants. We want to give that to our residents and our visitors throughout the year, not just at spring training, and we need to keep that in mind. We're also talking about some improvements at the Carpenter Complex, because when a Philly player is drafted and comes into their organization, the first place that they go to if they're not the number one draft pick is Clearwater, Florida. And they nurture these players and help develop them so that they can make it to the major leagues, starting right here in Clearwater, Florida. So it's something that all of us can be proud of, and it, again, cements those ties between our communities. The Carpenter Complex has four different fields. Again, the improvements that we had made there previously with the Phillies, whatever cost overrun we had, they absorb. And you see some of the work that is going to be done there. The timeline is important. It's something we want to clarify. You know, we know that TDC money is not available right away. We have no problem with that. The Phillies have no problem with that. Why we're here today is to ask for this conceptual approval so that we can go forward with the plans that need to be made, so that when the funding does become available, we will be ready, and that we don't lose this opportunity to get the state funding. And that's the plea that we have today, is to help us do this conceptual agreement now so that we can go forward with the ask for the state funding. The project cost, as has been reported, will be $79.7 million. Of that, we're requesting $40 million initially from the TDC and the county. And I say initially, I mean, that is our ask. We understand that we may have to negotiate that, but that is the ask that we think will cover the improvements that will need to be made, that together we want to make for the Phillies, for our residents, for the spring training fans, for the minor league, and everybody else who comes to Spectrum Field throughout the year. The city is going to put up money from its penny-for money. The Phillies will be putting up money and also will cover any cost overrun, as I had said before. So again, the reason we're here today is to ask that you initially approve the conceptual plan so that we can go forward to the state and ask for its assistance. And with that, again, this is some of the history of the fundings that have been provided in the past, and we will continue to provide. And if you'll have any questions, we are here.
What is your timeline to go to the state?
The sooner the better. We need to get that request in, because we're not sure what the state's going to be doing, and we would like to get that in. We're going to do an economic study that has been requested and get that data to the state. Hopefully, we will have it to them in March, you know, later than the end of March.
Are just saying that this is a conceptual approval, meat approval? To send it to the state?
Actually, Bill, it's in the audience, and you can clarify kind of that.
Okay. Well, wait and bring Bill up to see if there's any questions that you all have for the city council or the mayor at this point.
Okay.
Thank you all for being here in force
Thanks.
and en masse.
Thank you all.
Bill?
Good afternoon. Bill Berger with the Office of Management and Budget. And as far as the conceptual approval, what we're really looking for at this stage, when we say conceptual approval, is support to move forward in engaging the city and our consultants in requesting additional information, our due diligence materials, in order to then be able to negotiate with the city on what a potential deal may look like. So conceptual approval does not mean that anything that's been requested is automatically going to be something that is included in a particular agreement we may form together. So I don't know if that's helpful. The other thing we're looking for today is input on the deliverables that would be provided. So part of your agenda packet included a very detailed document related to the economic impact study. And then also, what I have that I'm putting on the screen now is the additional deliverables that have been communicated with the city thus far, which were summarized in your agenda packet, but include a detailed project description, project budget and completion timeline, project funding plan, marketing plan, including how the team's going to market the destination jointly with visiting St. Pete Clearwater, our CVB, and then also existing and proposed lease or license agreement, city/team deal term sheets, operating and maintenance costs associated with the facilities, long-range planning documents, and any facility feasibility studies, and any other documents that we may feel are necessary in order to negotiate an appropriate deal on behalf of the county and the public with the city.
The, you know, we have a bit more that we are still paying and, from our first allegation to the Phillies when that stadium was built. Do you know what that total amount is? Is that?
We have debt service that's going through 2023.
Right.
And it's about $600,000 a year.
But I mean altogether?
Yeah. What was the original?
The original amount in total, give me one second. So our commitment on the original deal was $7.7 million. And at the time that was originally negotiated, that was about a third of the total project cost.
And that agreement's been enforced since when?
2003.
2000?
2003 is when that debt service started. It was 20 years.
I thought it was 20 years. Yeah, okay. So because we've been helping to pay debt service, it's actually more than 7.7, then?
I'm sorry.
I said, our actual investment is more than the 7.7 million because we've been paying about $600,000 for 20 years, or will have paid.
There was a debt service component that included interest. So yes, it was more than that amount.
Okay, great. Commissioner Long?
Yes. So from the very beginning of when the stadium was built, do you have there how much money Pinellas County has invested in that stadium, total?
Our investment was limited to that commitment that was the 20-year debt service that we just described.
This is the only time that the county has allocated money for this stadium?
That's the only commitment that we've made from TDC funds that I'm aware of. If the TDC had any kind of support agreements with them from an operating or a marketing side, that would have been separate entirely, and that's not part of the stadium itself. So capital-wise, this is the limit of the commitment that we've made.
And that commitment is still outstanding until 2023?
Correct. That's the debt service commitment that we made, similar to what we did with the City of Dunedin and also with Tropicana Field.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers or Commissioner Gerard?
Good. Go ahead.
Commissioner Gerard.
Well, I can wait.
Okay. Commissioner Justice.
I don't know how deep you want to get into it today, since it's a conceptual and we're not getting into it, but there was some questions raised when the first airing of the proposal hit the press as far as the legality of using TDC dollars on non-stadium issues and for the ancillary, you know, the dormitories and training and player development, all that kind of stuff. And so that would be a question, and again, that can be part of the negotiation, you know, research, however you want to do it. And then it, my concern, and I think what we saw some of the previous capital outlays is, when we would do a up-two number, that kind of hamstrings our negotiating team.
Right.
And it already, we're in a hamstrung position already. So, I have concern about putting that 40 in as up to 40. It kind of, what I would like is, I'm supportive of being partners. I think that's what the statute allows for these funds. I think that there is benefit for the funds. But I don't want to be the majority partner. And the stadium situation in Dunedin and the stadium situation in Clearwater are the apples and oranges of stadiums if we ever had it in Pinellas County. So, those are just a couple of things that came to mind as we're talking about this. But again, I don't know how deep we want to get into this.
Commissioner Welch?
Well, I have proof that I actually typed that exact statement right here in my notes. The conceptual improvement amount is a question I had. Are we setting a cap of 40 million today or just saying, go forth and do your due diligence and come back to us? And at that point, we'll set an amount. And I want to be clear on that.
And I concur. I do not want to put a dollar amount out there at all. I think that we should negotiate this. I do know that in the latest materials I received, I, the Carpenter Training and the dorms have kind of been removed from our side of the equation. But for instance, is the facility improvements that they mentioned, the club level and elevator, restrooms and so on, they haven't done any design yet. And yet, there's a dollar figure of 31.4 million. Well, I don't think we know what those costs really are. And I guess the other part, and I love the Phillies, don't get me wrong. But when this whole, when I brought forward having the bed tax money do capital improvements in general, I didn't contemplate that we would be an ongoing funder of redoing spring training facilities on and on and on. You know, back when Commissioner Welch and I were both here then, you know, we committed, and I, if you include the debt services, probably around 12 million. And it was a much greater amount than we committed to the Blue Jays. And we really just band-aided the Blue Jays. And so, when their time came up this time, the reason I agreed to support it in part, and I was a reluctant one, as you know, to get there, was because we didn't treat the Blue Jays right way back then. And we should have done it right then and then not band-aided it. At the time, when we were, you know, several years ago, I had heard there was like a $10 million figure. And then I heard a $20 million figure. And then when it grew to $40 million, I was kind of shocked. And so, again, I love the Phillies, it's not that. But I think there's so many question marks and so much that needs to be done as far as due diligence and negotiation on the behalf of our staff that that's the direction that I think that we need to go in. Having been born and raised in Clearwater, here I am.
I had one other question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Welch?
Just had it up. There's a document in there that has a kind of pro forma. Cannot find it now. There's a facility admission line item here on the projected economic impact.
The economic impact study?
Yeah. It's on the last page of that document. It's a spreadsheet, capital. First line says capital, project name, and it's got incremental attendance, let the state spending per attendee. So, on that spreadsheet, under annual direct spending, there's a row for hotel, which is self-evident, but then there's facility admission. So, on that facility admission row, I'm just wondering, who did those funds go to? The facility admission row?
I wonder if you can bring?
Dennis Long, VSPC consultant, Commissioner. That document we're referring to is an attachment that sets out a format for the data that we're seeking as part of the economic impact study. And we developed that working with Jones Lang LaSalle, the county's economic impact study consultant. And that specific references to ticket revenue. And it would be one of the issues we would look at as part of the negotiations to see what kind of income is being generated to address not only the continued viability of the project, but also to protect the investment of public funds in the facility. So, in addition to ticket revenue, we would also be looking at issues, issues like the naming rights and those sorts of things, concession revenue, parking revenue.
Let me stick on that one for a minute because this might not be included in the final economic analysis, is what you're saying.
Well, it literally is a formatting issue. It may or may not be that the text of that document specifies what the economic impact consultant recommended we seek out because we got studies in the first go around of this that were all over the place in terms of the kinds of information that were generated, that was generated to support the economic impact analysis. So, but regardless of whether it's in the study or not, we will ask for that information as part of our analysis and due diligence.
Okay. And I don't want to get in the weeds now, Madam Chair, but it's that kind of question because you're talking about facility admission. I guess my question is, that $10 ticket price goes back to whom? To the Phillies, to the city?
It's different for every team.
Where does it go right now? Where does it go right now?
I'd have to defer to someone to answer that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. Right now, that goes to the team as well as there's some dollars that do come back to the city.
To the state?
No.
City.
To the team or to the city?
Oh, to the city.
So, Madam Chair, that's the kind of thing as we move forward. If 90% of that goes to the team, then it, to me, is not part of the economic benefit to the county. So, why would it be in that study as a benefit? So, it's that kind of question as we go through this that I want to be concerned about?
Understand, Commissioner. And I don't believe it was intended to show as an ultimate economic benefit. I understand that it's intended to show baseline information to evaluate the total economic benefit that comes out of the study. And Jones Lang LaSalle is an international firm that's involved not only in these kinds of studies, but also in stadium projects. So, they have substantial experience in evaluating those things. So, it's a data point that we're going to look at in order to make sure the investment's protected and to make sure we get the best deal for the public funding that's available to support spring training.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that if we're talking about economic impact, to me, it's economic impact to our community, not dollars going back to the team.
I agree.
And that is one example of that on that spreadsheet.
And if you reviewed the text, Commissioner, you'd see that the focus was really to measure the economic impact from tourists, both overnight visitors and day trippers from other counties.
And those are separate line items that make sense.
Yes, sir.
But that one didn't make sense to me.
I understand. And I'm sure that the consultant will hear about what the concerns are.
Thank you.
And I would also add that that type of statistic and data point provides additional context to the other data and allows us to do better due diligence validation of whether some of those other data points make sense in the context of that type of figure.
But you're drilling down to a total impact number at the bottom of that spreadsheet? And that is part of that total number? Is that correct?
That spreadsheet was not intended to be something that represents what the formulas are going to be today. That's simply a template to fill out. And then we'll use that to determine what the economic impact is that's positive benefit for the community.
Still a little uncomfortable, but I'll leave it there.
I understand where you're coming from.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Peters and then Commissioner Justice, I'll keep going around, sorry.
I have a couple, I have one, well, a couple of questions. Is there a Plan B if the state doesn't come through? And I'm going to say this not only because I just left there, which I have a general idea that Speaker Oliva will not allow any kind of stadium funding. He hasn't for several years. And now that he's speaker, I don't see that changing. And I don't know how the governor feels about stadium funding, but most of his closest allies are of the same mindset as Speaker Oliva. Representative Avila, for the last two years, has filed a stadium bill that, if you haven't read it, I highly recommend it. He hasn't filed it yet, but I do believe he will be filing it. And it states that if this bill passes, and this would be the third year in a row that he's filed it, it prohibits a sports franchise from constructing, reconstructing, renovating, or improving a facility on public land leased from the state or any public subdivision thereof. And it goes on to continue to prohibit government-owned land to work with sports franchises. So, my question to you is, is there a Plan B if you don't get state funding? Because I do expect Representative Avila to refile this bill again for year three. And I do not expect Speaker Oliva to allow sports franchise funding to go through the budget process.
One of the reasons why we're pleading with you to approve this today is so that we can go forward right away so that we don't have to go to a Plan B. Right now, we would qualify, but we need your help and that's why we're here.
So, there's no Plan B? If there is no state funding, there's no Plan B?
Plan B will be if you turn us down, then we'll go to Plan B.
Oh, I got it, okay. If we turn you down, but if the state turns you down?
If we can't, we need your approval to go to the state.
Okay. But if the state turns you down?
We feel confident that with our legislative delegation and Speaker-to-be Sproles there, that we feel confident that we will succeed. We may not, but what we know right now is that we need your help today.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Let me move over to Commissioner Gerard because she was really next in line. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't sure we were going to go there today, but I recall four years ago being brand new on this commission and being shown Bright House Field as the state of the art of spring training facilities and especially in comparison to Dunedin, who we just gave $40 million to. And I, yeah, the price has gone up exponentially since we gave that $40 million to Dunedin or to that team. And I think it really has no relationship to what you all really need. Just saying. I too do not want to be the majority funder again and again and again. You know, it's sort of like a revolving charge account here. And I don't think that's what these funds were designed for. And certainly now that we have some opportunity to use them for something else, we have to be a lot more careful about what we're spending it on and particularly over and over and over again. And then, as Commissioner Welch said a couple of weeks ago, there's the raise. We don't know what's going on there yet, but that's going to be a big one. So, that's all.
Thank you.
I also noticed that the $40 million all of a sudden does not include anything about accommodations and the price didn't go down. He just shifted it from one side of the ledger to the other. Well, that's not, yeah, never mind. Not that we didn't know, I just want you to know we noticed.
Commissioner Justice?
Well, I didn't ask to be recognized, but I'll take a moment.
I thought I saw a hand.
Just in response to the issue with the raise, that's still potentially years away. I mean, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. That could be a 500, 600, 800, you know, whatever. But we don't have to be the first, whatever our financial contribution to the Ray Stadium, if we make one, doesn't have to be the first portion, it can be the last portion. So, the timing of it, those aren't mutually exclusive decisions, that's all.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yes, most of the comments that I was going to make have been made, so I won't elaborate too much. It's just that I do think obviously that the state of Florida and Pinellas County historically have made a commitment to spring training as being an important part of our, the fabric of whatever, whether it's the county or the state. And I do think it's an important part. And so, I think, you know, with all of the, you know, the scrutinies that you all are going to go through, and there are going to be many because funding stadiums is not something that is welcome with open arms, certainly not in Tallahassee these days and many around this county too. Because we take a lot of, we take a lot because we do try to support our spring training here. The raise issue is there. I'm not saying they're mutually exclusive, but it is there. And unlike what we originally start, we didn't put a fence around that money because it's not there right now. And it's, we made that kind of conceptual commitment. So, that's over here. And then there are some new avenues that have been opened for our use of TDC funding that we're going through. Now, we're kind of struggling to try to identify what funds, what we can use those funds for that have a transit, excuse me, that was a slip.
Freudian.
Yeah. But that have a tourism tie to use those funds. So, I mean, that is a new, a new day. But I would, you know, the one comment that's been made is that those facilities are beautiful. I suspect that if you went to the other team in the county and said, you can have these facilities right now, they would embrace them in a heartbeat. They are beautiful facilities. And so, and again, it doesn't mean that the needs that you have aren't real. I'm not saying that at all. That's a team's self-reflection on what they really need for their operation. But at the end of the day, we do have to look really closely at those numbers. So, from my perspective today, it's about, yeah, I want to continue exploring this relationship. I want to move forward with that. But I don't want people to walk away from here thinking that we're nodding on 40 million. So, as long as that's crystal clear, I would like to explore because we have a commitment to these folks, but also to our residents that, you know, that spring training is important to some degree. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to belabor the issue, but I am not going to be a yes vote on this item today. I think time and circumstance are everything. And you all know that I have been very vocal and very passionate about wanting to have a conversation about these dollars and what the real need of our county is. And I have listened very carefully to the comments made at the TDC meeting by our board. I respect each and every one of them. But I want to have the conversation about what are we going to do with regard to funding the enormous issue we have with bringing tourists from Tampa International to Clearwater Beach when TripAdvisor, the biggest comments on there are about how dissatisfied the new tourists are when they come here and sit for an hour on the bridge trying to get across the bridge. Until we have that conversation about how we're going to relieve that congestion on our bridges, I am not voting yes on any allocation from TDC.
But just to clarify that, we're not?
This is not an allocation at all today.
Not allocating a penny today, so.
It's only?
I don't care what the amount is.
In my opinion, all we're doing today is giving the city the ability to go ahead and submit their application to the state and then authorize Dennis Long, who will be representing the county commission, to go ahead and get their economic impact study done, to fulfill all the details of the application and to have it considered in the future with no set dollar amount at this point in time at all. And then, Mr. Burton, I think you wanted to highlight something.
Just so we're clear in terms of the recommended action that's embodied within the text of your legislation. It's approval of county staff to engage with the City of Clearwater in accordance with the Capital Project Funding Program guidelines to review the application and negotiate the funding and agreement terms related to the tourism development tax funding for retaining spring training facility improvements for the Philadelphia Phillies. Everything else is background and informational in terms of the requests, timelines. Everything else is background and informational in terms of the request, timelines, and project. But that's, that's what you would be approving here today.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would agree with most of what Commissioner Egger said and support moving forward with that conversation, as you mentioned. But as I've said a couple of times before, and I think we're gonna talk about it at our workshop next week, that we've talked about the raise funding for a long time, but we've never made a commitment in any way, shape, or form to funding the raise officially.
That is correct. So this conversation definitely to be continued. I agree with Commissioner Long. One thing I mentioned at the TDC meeting last week was, you know, we might contemplate that we want to take any and all capital and line it all up so that we, you know, could decide if we looked at twenty percent being set aside for transportation, that would be twelve million dollars a year. So maybe that's something we wanna consider underneath this category. This category was really meant to be used for capital, and it makes a lot of sense to be able to do that. I also advise the tourist development council that, you know, we need to show the return on investment from our marketing and costs that are being spent across the board to show that we are realistically using that money wisely and making a good investment and getting that return. I mean, surely, we know we're getting more heads and beds, but we wanna quantify that. So I'm also going to discuss this, not this, but the tourist development funding bed tax at the February TDC meeting, and also advise them that we would be having a joint meeting. So we are going to address this in a very systematic and fair manner, and so that we can, I'll hopefully agree on a path forward.
So can I ask you a question, Commissioner? So just hypothetically, since you talked about a twenty percent would be approximately twelve million, what if that twenty, remember when we did the arrangement to pay for the Criminal Justice Center, and we took X amount of dollars off the top of the penny? So what if we used that thought process with the bed tax money and just took X amount of dollars? And I'm not married to what that looks like. I just think that we have to have skin in the game from all our revenue sources as much as we can to do our part to help fund the mess that we're in with our transportation gridlock. And I'm just curious about what that might look like from the, what?
I'm gonna have Michael Zoss come up.
Oh, no, don't do that, because he's just gonna mess it all up. He's an attorney.
I don't, I mean, I think we just need to understand we have some parameters that we're gonna have to operate under, and I'm not necessarily sure we could earmark an amount off the top, because we have to show that whatever expenditure we made is beneficial to the tourism industry.
But that would be if it was an access from the airport, right?
Well, you have to do a quantifiable study, and then of that, only seventy percent can, of the tourist tax money can be spent on a capital project, on a capital project, no operations and maintenance. So, correct? Is there anything else I missed?
There's, there's a lot, Commissioner, and good afternoon, Michael Zoss. I was hoping I wouldn't have to speak, but hey. There is a way of getting there, Commissioner, as you propose, regarding what I believe at this juncture, since I hadn't really considered it, would require a tourist development plan amendment, which would require a supermajority vote. Similarly, beach nourishment in the tourist development plan, there's no longer a half percent that's been dedicated, but by policy, you adopt that as part of the budget. That would be another way of doing it. So there are different ways of trying to get there if that was the will of the board. We can work on that, of course. We'll have to look at, as Commissioner Seal was alluding to, there are certain further restrictions within this particular capital, series of capital uses that have now been authorized as far as which percents you can actually utilize to fund those types of projects. There's a seventy percent cap maximum of any project anyway from tourist development tax dollars. And then within that seventy percent, it's not all six percents that can be utilized. So this is what keeps me up at night, these kind of issues. So once we get there, we can determine a little bit more, but there, you definitely need to have a conversation to give us direction.
But I just don't wanna do this all in isolation. This needs to be kind of a broad conversation and lining up the different priorities so that we don't miss, miss anything, that we do this in a very focused and a very deliberate manner, which we are all well-known for, right? Commissioner Eggers?
The only thing I was gonna ask, as it relates to clarification of that use, it seems like since the state has opened that door, there are more questions than answers with how we can use it and where we can use it. And I know that we were gonna go to the state to kind of try to get some additional guidance on that. I just wanna make sure that we're doing whatever we can, because when we come back to have this conversation, whether it's the raise or whether it's other projects that I think really are promotional to tourism on our beaches, if you think, see all the negative promotional, negative promotion that's going on, this would be a positive thing. So I think it certainly opens the door for that. But I'd just like to continue making sure that we have all the clarifications, and if we don't, then let's try to get some while they're up there doing whatever they're doing this next three months.
If I may, Commissioners, to follow up, one thing the board may wanna consider, maybe at the strategic workshop, as you're discussing these kind of issues, as to the clarification, because it is a brand-new statutory amendment, there is absolutely no case law, no interpretation of what the intent was and what it's supposed to, how it's supposed to apply. One thing would be possibly to consider an Attorney General's opinion to figure out what uses can be allowed or not allowed in that. So that would be one option. If not, then we could basically, which is not uncommon, canvass some of the other counties to see how they're kind of interpreting and what their position is. I don't know if anyone's used it yet to fund any of those projects, because it's been, I think, in effect since July of seventeen. So it's fairly new, but it's definitely part of the conversation.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many of my comments have been stated, but Attorney Zoss, I do wanna tell you, we appreciate your work, and I'm gonna quote you now. You said, "There is a way of getting there," and I think that is the phrase of the day. Don't add to it, please.
On that note, I'm leaving.
And I'm looking forward to that conversation that you just talked about, because I do think there's a way to get there and address the needs we've talked about, particularly Commissioner Long and transit. But it's gonna be beyond the bed tax. It's all those things we- I understand that, but for folks who are watching, you can't fix it with just a bed tax. It's all those things we talked about last week. Penny for Pinellas, gas tax, all those other, and infrastructure sales tax at some point is the real fix for PSTA. And, you know, I'm looking forward to that conversation, including the raise conversation. We're the only game in town, and it is back in St. Pete and Pinellas's court now. I know I'm mixing metaphors, but it is. So I wanna have that discussion. The strength of pay-as-you-go means exactly what Commissioner Justice said. That's a decision for further down the line, as long as we don't bond that debt and lock it up. You know, we still have that resource. So I'm really looking forward to that conversation next week. We love the Phillies, we've been supporters for years, we will be in the future, but it has to be balanced and strategic going forward, and that's a conversation we'll have.
Right.
Thanks.
And I think the final point that I'll make is, you know, it's, the bed tax has been open for other uses, but in reality, the amount that, that the bed tax generates is, you know, miniscule compared to other resources like an infrastructure sales tax and some other, and the penny for Pinellas, for example, that we need to consider. So I almost see these, and I'll figure it out with Mr. Burton, but I see these almost as separate but also crossover conversations, because, you know, we obviously need to look at the transportation resources. We need to look at the, you know, bed tax capital uses, and so we'll, we'll frame that in the right time and manner. So stay tuned. But anyway, do I have a motion? I mean, I'm sorry, City of Clearwater, you happen to be the poster child, because this is a conversation we started talking about with the bed tax. And so it's an opportune time for us to have a further discussion, and thank you for your patience. But I would like to get this, at least, you know, this conceptual approval so that they can move forward with the state.
With approval, Madam Chair.
A motion by Commissioner Welch and second by Commissioner Peters. It passes six to one.
I don't have mine.
Has everybody voted? Six to one. Good luck to the City of Clearwater, and thank you for being here today. Okay, Agenda Item Seventeen?
Agenda Item Seventeen is a funding agreement with West Care Gulf Coast Florida, Inc. for enhancement and expansion of the Pinellas County Family Drug Court. This is enhanced funding, and there is no cash match.
So move, second?
A motion by Commissioner Justice, and I think I heard the second from Commissioner Welch. First. Unanimous vote. Moving on to Agenda Item Eighteen?
Item Eighteen is a program recommendation for the Criminal Justice Mental Health and Substance Abuse Reinvestment Grant Submission. This is approving this Public Safety Coordinating Council's recommendation for enhanced services in relation to the Public Defender's Road to Success Program, and again, this has no cash match.
No approval?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch. A unanimous decision, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Nineteen?
Number Nineteen is a Second Amendment to an Agreement with Operation Par, Inc. for, at 2018, expanding access to quality substance abuse, or substance use disorder and mental health services grant award.
I have moved to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, unanimous vote. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Twenty, it's County Administrator Ms. Salinas.
I have three items today. At your February fifth, 2019 meeting, staff will be bringing forward a public hearing agenda item. This is related to reappropriation of unanticipated fund balance. This actually is related to carryover funds necessary for certain capital projects that either did not progress as anticipated in 2018, and it also adjusts the 2019 capital budget. In accordance with statute, we're required to advertise for a public hearing and then have that public hearing to make these statutory changes. So this is just informational at this point, that we'll go ahead and have the advertisement, it'll be on your, your next agenda. And then the second item that you had is you wanted an update on the impact from the government shutdown, and I would ask Lourdes to come forward and provide kind of a brief discussion, overview of some of the activities we're doing.
Sure, Lourdes Benedict, Assistant County Administrator. And you recently received a memo regarding the federal shutdown and what we were doing, but just a little more information. Our folks at Human Services have had a bi-weekly call with several stakeholders in the community to bring the folks together to figure out what we're doing and how we can help. Some of those individuals have been 2-1-1 very much at the table, RCS, the Free Clinic, the Network to End Hunger, JBB, and the Coast Guard. And as far as those who are affected, we have found that there's about thirteen hundred individuals in Pinellas County, and that includes our TSA at our airport, there's about a hundred of those individuals. The FAA at our airport, also thirty individuals. And then the Coast Guard has about eleven hundred individuals in our area, which include the Clearwater Airside, about eight hundred, three hundred in the St. Pete area, and five hundred at Sand Key. So those are the individuals right now that we're looking at. One of the main things that these folks have indicated that they need is help with food. So we brought a lot of those partners together, and we've been able to pop up three locations other than all the pantries that we already have. One of them is with the St. Pete Coast Guard and the Free Clinic in St. Pete, Clearwater, St. Pete Airport. We're also gonna have a pantry there, and the Clearwater Coast Guard, the RCS is helping those folks there. And what we wanted to do is bring food to them, so they wouldn't even have to, you know, wait in the line, go to a pantry, and even spend their gas on that. I did wanna give a shout-out to the St. Pete Free Clinic and RCS. It's very, it's really humbling being on some of these calls, and, and everything that anyone asks for, they just basically say yes. You know, how are we gonna refrigerate the food? We'll bring in refrigerators. We don't have staff to help with this, this is the Coast Guard now talking. We'll bring in volunteers, we'll bring in staff. You just tell us what we need, and we'll get it done. So it's been really something to be on, on some of those calls, so I wanted to thank them in particular. Also wanted to thank the Pinellas Community Foundation, who stepped up, because these food pantries now are go, they're already stretched. So now they're gonna stretch a little more, and they've offered a support of thirty thousand dollars to those folks at our food pantry. So kudos to the Pinellas Community Foundation. Also wanna remind folks out there that we still have our Adult Emergency Financial Assistance Program, and we also have the Juvenile Welfare Board and their system navigators to help families. And 2-1-1 is the single point of contact for all of this. Again, they have done a great job of this. All you need to do is pick up the phone and call 2-1-1 if you need help, or if you'd rather text, sometimes it's a little quicker. You just text your zip code to eight nine eight two one one. So for anyone out there listening that needs help, that's what you need to do. So far, we've had, as of this morning, 2-1-1 has had seven families and five individuals. So we're not seeing a lot of people yet, but of course, as you all know, this is, we don't know when this is gonna end. So we're gonna continue to have our calls and listen to what the community is telling us. Also, United Way has provided twenty thousand dollars to help 2-1-1, and that's anything from diapers to food to, you know, whatever folks may need. Also wanted to mention the Coast Guard has a mutual aid program, and they are supplying folks with a fifteen hundred dollar loan to get them through. And some have already done that. Our own Pinellas Utilities is gonna have a deferred payment plan for these individuals that are utility customers of ours of Pinellas County. So if you need help with that, you can call 2-1-1, or you can call the utilities office, and the number's right on your bill. So take advantage of that if you need it. You had asked, I believe, Commissioner Long about SNAP benefits. I reached out to the Regional Director of DCF, had a meeting with her on Friday. And basically, what we're hearing and what she is hearing is that everyone is getting their food stamps through February, and those have already actually been issued. So there's a lot of marketing being done for folks to please budget your food stamps, because you're not gonna get them again in February. You would've already gotten them, so that's important. Temporary assistance to needy families, which is the cash assistant, cash assistance that the state provides, that will not be affected. I believe that was another one of the questions. School lunches, which also is through the USDA, will be through February as well. And reached out to the school board, and they are going to help families connect if they're a federal employee to see how they can help them with free and reduced lunch. As far as getting the word out, we're working with our marketing communications, social media, did a press release. And Human Services will continue to work with stakeholders until this is over.
Thank you so much, Lourdes.
Thank you very much, Lourdes, and all of our staff and our partners, and 2-1-1, and everyone out there helping. So I think there's a question, Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, just assuming that with the partners that you're talking about, you're including the twenty-four cities. I've noticed on Facebook a couple of cities that have really stepped up to do what they're trying, you know, trying to do their parts. So just wanted to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, so they don't have to do something additional. They could plug right into what we're providing, so we'll make sure those twenty-four cities know what we're doing. Make it easier for them to get going quickly, so, thank you.
And we certainly don't wanna duplicate efforts if we can do it together, so that's a good point. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you. Lourdes, thank you for you and your staff and the great work you're doing. The, you mentioned utilities, what are we all- What are we offering in terms of relief?
We are offering to defer payment. So they're not getting paid, but they're supposed to get paid in the future, so we're deferring the payment.
And that's on water?
For our utilities customers, yeah.
Have you been in contact with Duke? Are they providing any relief that we know of?
I know that Pi was responsible for getting with Duke. I don't know, Daisy, if you have something else on them?
I was trying to talk a little bit earlier. Daisy Rodriguez, Human Services. Yes, Lourdes indicated when we spoke with Mr. Jewsbury, he had indicated that he was working with Duke Energy to help ameliorate some of that cost to those affected associates.
Could you swing back with us, just let us know what they're providing?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am, sure.
Thank you again. We really, really appreciate the report.
Thanks to Daisy and her team, really. I'm just up here, but she's doing her work.
We know that.
And the staff. Because as this drags on, the impact will become even more
That's crazy.
daunting and difficult for our federal employees, so.
I have one additional item.
Just one more question real quick on that.
I'm sorry, yes.
As partners go, tapping into our private sector, is there a way that Mike's group, again, I think there are many companies out there that would like to be able to do something. They're trying to figure that out, maybe we're already doing that, so I just didn't want to assume anything, so.
Sure, and I'll go ahead and give a number out to the Human Services Office if anybody would like to do that. And just as I was sitting here, actually, I got something from Doyle.
Of course you did. Eye in the sky.
That wants to donate or help out with this cause, so we're connecting them as we speak.
Who's that?
The Pinellas County Medical Association, as an example, has just reached out. So if anyone out there wants to reach out and doesn't know what to do, they can dial seven-two-seven-four-six-four-eight-four-one-seven, and we'll connect them.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Burton?
The last item I have is kind of bittersweet. Commissioners, this one I'd like to ask Michael Hill to come up, our Director of Veteran's Services. This one's bittersweet because Michael's retiring, and so, you know. This, Michael obviously has had a long career. Nineteen years ago, he started as a Veteran's Services Officer and was promoted to the Director position in two thousand and fourteen. As you all know, more so than I even, he's been instrumental in leading our Veterans Offices to enhance our outreach education and really link veterans and their families to benefits and resources available to them. He's demonstrated leadership for a number of years. He's served on the Veterans Advisory Groups to address issues and concerns in the community. And so he is retiring at the end of the month, but we certainly did not want him to go without bringing him up and thanking him for all those years of service to, not only to our veterans, you know, but to all of the residents and families that they served.
And to our country.
I especially want to thank him because I remember when you became Director, there needed to be a lot of action in order to help our military veterans, and there had been some complaints out there, and you came in and you straightened it all out and did an excellent job, and you will be sorely missed, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to share a few words with us if you'd like to.
Don't cry.
First and foremost, I don't want to say it was me, it was we, okay? So we make that M W. And just from the Board of County Commissioners, the County Administration, the various departments throughout Pinellas County. Lourdes Benedict, when she was the Director of Human Services, right now, Daisy Rodriguez, her stellar leadership and her dedication to Human Services speaks volumes about how this county really has wrapped their arms around those that have served and continue to serve. And, you know, last but not least, the Veteran's Services team that I've served with in the past and present, you know, I couldn't have done the things that I've accomplished without them. And I just want you guys to know, you use the term bittersweet, it's been sweet. Maybe it's a bunt in the road, but I won't call it bitter at all, you know, so just want to say, a lot of people see me walking around with a smile, so they didn't know if I was coming or going because I smile all the time. Just remember and know I appreciate the opportunity, and when you see the flag waving, think about me, not saying goodbye, but just waving every day saying hello.
Thank you. We now have County Attorney Ms. Salinas?
I have nothing.
Okay, then again, County Administrator reports?
We have one. We have the final draft of the Downtown Harbor Master Plan. Staff's been working on the Palm Harbor Community Group with them to identify the various aspects of that, and today Rebecca Stonefield will come up. She's a principal planner and provide an overview of the report.
Good afternoon. Rebecca Stonefield with the Pinellas County Planning Department. I'm here to provide an update on the draft master plan for the downtown. So just to situate you within the county, downtown Palm Harbor is in the northern section of the county, and the study area focuses around Florida Avenue between Eighth, sorry, Eighth Street west of Alt-19 to Omaha Street to the east, and from approximately Indiana Avenue to the north and Michigan Avenue to the south. So a little bit of quick background, the original master plan for the downtown was adopted in two thousand and one, and since the time of that adoption, many of the projects identified within the plan have been completed, with a few remaining, but the majority of projects had been completed, and we feel it's time, felt it was time to come back to the community and figure out what the latest issues within the downtown were. As such, we formed a focus group in late two thousand and sixteen and started meeting with them initially so they could identify some of the key concerns and issues that were current in the downtown, and we wanted to confirm that with the community at large, so we held open houses through two thousand and seventeen, held online surveys to try to confirm that the initial issues identified were in fact a concern for them as well, and identify any new issues that maybe the focus group hadn't come up with. Out of that public input process, we landed on ten key recommendations that came from the community, and we have been working on some follow-up studies and analysis, which I'll touch on a bit as I move forward, and all of that has led to this draft master plan. So the ten recommendations focus within three primary categories, character and identity, connectivity, and branding and marketing. Within the character and identity category, one of the concerns that came out of the community was that there was a need to enhance the pedestrian experience. It is a walkable downtown, and they felt the need to provide additional lighting and landscaping, and also potentially provide benches and bike racks to help the pedestrian experience within the downtown. I'll mention that the Merchants Association for the downtown has been coordinating with Public Works for, as part of an inter-local agreement through BP monies that have been targeted for lighting and landscaping specifically within the downtown, so that has been moving forward. Another need that the community identified was that of additional retail to be part of the downtown business community. We worked with a consultant to complete a retail market study, and the findings of that study did suggest that there is the opportunity for the downtown to capture additional retail through two thousand and thirty. The type of retail that would come in would be more boutique style, no larger than potentially a two thousand square foot footprint, but the opportunity is there. However, that study also suggested that we relook at zoning a little bit to see if that could further support the type of retail that would come in and the amount of retail, and make it feasible for them to actually locate within the downtown. They also suggested that we consider providing a gateway along Alt-19, so passersby knew that they had arrived and that it kind of identifies the downtown. Another concern raised by the community was associated with the existing historic guidelines that the downtown is subject to. There is concern that the process associated with obtaining approvals were somewhat hindered and lengthened to get to approvals because of the guidelines that may be a bit confusing in how they're implemented and how they meet the needs of the historic district. Before, we wanted to look at the historic guidelines specifically. We found it necessary to update the community's historic survey. It had not been done since the early nineties, so several years have passed, so we, again, worked with the consultant to provide that updated survey. And the results of that did identify one additional contributing structure, or a structure that has some level of historic significance. And then also, based on its initial view of the historic guidelines, suggested that it be cleaned up by, with two approaches. One, for non-contributing structures as well as contributing structures, you focus on the form and the scale in keeping with the historic nature of the downtown, but for contributing structures specifically, the design features, the architectural requirements and so forth, would relate more directly to those contributing structures. And the final character and identity targeted effort identified within the plan has to do with outdoor open space. The community identifies itself as being a family-friendly pedestrian community, yet they feel that they need additional opportunities to have open space within the downtown. Being primarily built out, it's hard to identify maybe new parcels that could provide open space, but the master plan has three suggestions in it, the first being that maybe expand programs and activities that occur in Popstansel Park, which is west of Alt-19. It's a, it's a community feature there that is already well-used, and maybe programming that a bit more is a possibility, as well as there is a fairly large median, over a half an acre, along Florida Avenue, also west of Alt-19, and there may be the opportunity to provide passive and somewhat programmed activities within that area. And then finally, the master plan identifies the potential for the county to consider purchasing properties in the future to serve either solely as an open space amenity or be part of some, some level of redevelopment plan that open space can be incorporated into that. So the connectivity issues, the first was the identification of sidewalk gaps. Again, this is a pretty, pretty good walkable downtown, it has a pretty extensive sidewalk network, but the community did say there are gaps in that network, whether it's in the downtown directly or in the adjacent residential neighborhoods. So we have put a sidewalk gap map together, identifying what stretches may not have a sidewalk on either side, and we'll be working with Public Works to prioritize and identify how we can fund those improvements. The community also would like to become a golf cart community, or they express some interest in doing so, and so our Traffic Engineering Department has been working with the Merchants Association to finalize the boundary of where golf carts might potentially be allowed to share the road with cars, and they are going to likely circulate a petition to see if that's what the community wants within the next several weeks. Another connectivity issue was that of parking. Something that had come out through the open houses was that there is a challenge, there is some level of challenge in finding parking spaces within the downtown, and we asked them when and where, where is the biggest problem? They identified the intersection of Eleventh Street and Nebraska Avenue as being the key location of finding parking a challenge, and there are a number of restaurants focused in that area, so we understood that that could be a concern, as well as they said that's pretty much a concern Mondays through Saturdays, primarily in the evenings from five to nine P.M. So planning staff went out and did parking analysis observations for three separate weeks and three separate months and times of the year to do actual counts and see what type of availability was there. And what was found that even in the worst condition, there was still twenty-nine percent of public parking remaining available, which translates to about one hundred and sixteen parking spaces, but typically you would have in excess of one hundred and fifty-eight public parking spaces available. So even with those findings, we, the master plan has put forth that we will continue to work with the neighborhood to put, initially to put maybe a parking map together that the businesses could use that will identify where public parking is available. You're really not talking about more than typically a two-minute, if not less, walk between where public parking is and where the businesses are typically located, so the map would even suggest this is a typical one-minute walk or what have you, and we've been working with the Merchants Association on that at the moment. And longer term, the plan does suggest that the county look at complete, having Nebraska Avenue specifically become a complete street with on-street parking, and we'll be coordinating that as well. And finally, and probably associated with connectivity, and probably the comment we heard most often, all the time, was the need for safe crossing of Alt-19. So you have the Pinellas Trail and the parks and the water west of Alt-19 and the downtown core to the east, and so how do pedestrians cross that safely? So we brought back the conversation to get some feedback and input on whether or not a roundabout would be the preference at Florida Avenue, potentially a traffic signal at Nebraska, and it was found that the common desire was for a roundabout, not only because that provides safe crossing, but because that could serve as a gateway. That is the intersection of Florida and Alt-19, and that is the entry to the downtown. So a roundabout would serve two purposes. FDOT is in the process of completing a corridor study along Alt-19 from the northern to the southern boundary within the county. I believe the result of that will be coming up soon, but we have been informing FDOT about the results of our community input and that the roundabout is the preference for the community, and so we should be seeing results, I think, relatively soon for that corridor study and what the recommendation is from FDOT being a state road. And then the final broad category is that of branding and marketing, and it was important to a lot of people in the community that additional marketing efforts happen to bring people into the downtown, not only for a purpose of businesses, but for family events and community events that happen. The master plan lays out a number of potential things that they can consider doing, including creating a specific brand and logo and marketing around that, any wayfinding or brochures that are produced, be consistent with that, enhance the online presence for the downtown as well as potentially create a community newsletter. And we will be talking in a moment about different entities that could be formed to help oversee the implementation of the plan, and we believe that branding and marketing efforts that move forward should be part of the charge of whatever entity that may be. So as I mentioned, those were the primary recommendations that came out of the community that are referred to as the targeted efforts of the master plan, but the master plan then also outlines a number of implementation tools that could be, that we could move forward with. So the first one is that of a form-based code. And the, a form-based code has many benefits to it, the first being that it really focuses on form and scale and could help promote the development pattern of the historic district that downtown, the downtown is. It can also support additional retail to meet that need as well. And also, there is a level of predictability that comes along with a form-based code, not only for the community, so they, there's a better sense of how their neighbors can develop their property, but for applicants who understand how to get to approval through the process in a streamlined way. There's also the opportunity with a form-based code to allow for a smooth transition between the, in terms of uses and scale, between the downtown core and the adjacent residential neighborhoods that are around it. It addresses how you can have a good buffer between or put the right uses, and again, scale between those types of areas. So other things that are laid out within the master plan are potential funding sources to help see some of these projects through. We'll also talk in a moment about different entities that could be created and incorporate some of these funding tools. And the first one that is mentioned here is the TIF, and this is, this is really a revenue source that could be used based on the increase in assessed value for the participating properties. The TIF can address infrastructural improvements, but it has to be associated with a redevelopment plan specifically, and in the county, it's often associated with a CRA, which I'll touch on in a moment. An MSBU is also a possible funding source, and this is a non-ad valorem assessment that would go towards a targeted service that could be provided, and in the downtown, that could go for such things as recreation service facilities, et cetera, expanding the sidewalk network and so forth. The penny is also something to consider. It's adopted every ten years or voted on every ten years, so as we move forward, programming the next penny, the county should keep in mind the types of projects that could be targeted within downtown Palm Harbor that are identified in the master plan. A lighting district is another non-ad valorem assessment that would go directly towards the installation and maintenance of lighting within the downtown. This was actually recommended in the first master plan, but the community opted not to pursue this, but considering the number of comments that we did get saying that lighting is an issue, if the current Merchants Association plan doesn't fully if the current merchants association plan doesn't fully address that, it might be something that should be reconsidered for the downtown. And the general fund is another possibility for funding that really would be more of a supplement to a planned project that may have another funding source. It could be, since it's yearly, it's adopted on a yearly basis, there may be the opportunity to use general funds to supplement some projects or even provide additional staff that could work directly with the community. So another thing that's outlined within the master plan are the types of entities that could help oversee the implementation of the plan, working in coordination with county staff. And the first one mentioned is the Main Street Program. This is actually a national and state program that provides technical assistance and best practices for economic development or redevelopment within a downtown area or commercial neighborhoods. Again, the downtown Palm Harbor group had actually been part of the Main Street Program in the past, but over time, it became less active. A business improvement district is, has the possibility of funding projects through a tax assessment for the businesses who are involved in the bid itself. And they can, funds could go towards beautification projects, maintenance, things like that. That's typically how it's used, and could even go towards a marketing plan specifically and the oversight of moving, marketing forward for the community. A CDC is a not-for-profit organization, and it works, it focuses on economic development projects and seeks both public and private funding sources for specific projects. And the CRA is the last entity that's discussed within the master plan itself. The CRA is designated based on meeting light criteria, that is both state and local criteria. And it is typically associated with a TIF, as I mentioned. And so the timing of creating a CRA has to really be looked, you have to look at what is the possibility of increased value and assessment, and make sure if this is something that the county wanted to move forward with, that the boundary is large enough and the timing of being able to increase value of the properties is appropriate. We shared this draft master plan online with the community in early December. We had it available not only through the county's downtown Palm Harbor webpage, but we also had put it up on Open Pinellas so people could provide comments directly there. Through the end of December, we had 192 views and 13 comments provided, most of which really were just reiterating a lot of what's in the plan, sharing their support for those issues. The plan remains on the county webpage, and we were still accepting comments if they choose to come in. So the next steps would be, we'd make any final revisions to the master plan based on comments that come in. We anticipate beginning the public hearing process this spring, and that is primarily because Open Pinellas right now is looking at making some amendments to the county-wide plan process. And this, as an activity center within the county-wide plan, we need to go through their process. And we feel if they go through their approvals first, it will help streamline the overall approval process for the plan. And in the meantime, we will continue to work with the community and address any of the targeted efforts. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The folks that contributed to the surveys and the responses, are they residents and business owners in that, targeted?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not the outside area. The thing that was interesting to me was the desire for more green space, because there's really, I think there's one vacant lot near the White Chapel that I think everything else has got some structure on it, so would require a purchase and demolition. But I kind of sensed that it was more about the access to the park across the road, correct? About that safe access?
I do believe that the community's desire is to have opportunities for open space within the core itself, but obviously, as you mentioned, there are limited opportunities for that. So again, as we move forward with redevelopment, is there a way to incorporate that as a solution? But we also noted that if we are able to solve that safe crossing, we could take advantage of the resources that are to the west.
And it really was overwhelmingly in favor of a roundabout?
It was primarily through the open houses, and we launched two online surveys. And on the first online survey, it was an open-ended question, really asking a specific question that had nothing to do with the roundabout, yet people still brought it up themselves and did suggest that that's something they thought would be appropriate.
Okay. I mean, we've obviously all seen the big one, but in the neighborhood of Justice and Man, we have a small one, and it's, still seem to have people trouble navigating that. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Commissioner Walsh.
I think the second question, they called it the Eggers Roundabout, and that was the support way up. I am really impressed by your Open Pinellas, and when did we start using that? Did I just miss it?
No, has it been two years? About two years.
I see it's still open for 54th Avenue. I mean, you're able to see where folks were who responded, and I think we, well, I'll blame myself for not being plugged in on that. But the next time you open up a project, I see three out there now, you all do it through social media, how do you get the word out there that this is a?
We do a combination press releases, and we have local publications also let people know about surveys and emails and so forth.
And the 54th Avenue, how long will that one be open? I know I'm skipping subjects here, but.
It's open-ended, it'll be open here. Just so we're not yelling through the chambers. It's just open-ended. We put that one out again for additional comments, so it does have a take-down date at this point.
But the Palm Harbor is closed, the master plan is closed at this point?
It is closed through Open Pinellas, but again, people can access the plan and provide comments through the downtown Palm Harbor webpage itself, through the county.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited that we're moving this along a little bit, at least trying to get some input here from the board. You know, I think, you know, I talk to a lot of folks in and around the area, and they frequently point to either Dunedin or Tarpon Springs about the energy and effort that goes on to getting things moving. As you know, things take, it's tough to get things moving. And so the frequent conversation is, though we don't want to be a city, we'd like to have a mechanism in place, I guess, to kind of get that, you know, a little bit more of that local representation to kind of get the energy going. So, and that kind of relates to the implementation part of this and the mechanism that they're looking for, I think is going to have to include some kind of, as we move along, some kind of local group of folks that want to be either a focus group or a group that you can sound things off of, or somebody that can have some, a regular group of folks that you can get together as you move forward. In the end, I think you're going to have to at least solidify that with some type of formal organization. But it's important that we get feedback. It's the oldest downtown in Pinellas County just about, and certainly one of our only downtowns that we're responsible for. So I think that's important. And so I think those are the things that jumped out at me. Communicating, engaging, and exciting the public is something that we've just got to do. It's been, this process itself has been about, well, I don't want to, three-year process, maybe, two years. And I frequently run into folks in the Palm Harbor area that ask me what's going on because they're not sure what the latest is. So I think whatever we do going forward, you get that local group, you continue to do what you're doing, which is great work, so thank you for that. Engaging, exciting, and really getting people, knowing something is going to happen at the end of it is really important, you know. So I think that's going to be a really important part of it as well. But, and then ultimately, finding some kind of small funding source to do incremental projects, because at the end of it, we need private investment, we need public investment in an area. It's not a big area, but certainly, and then I guess one other thought is, and you touched on it, is family involvement. They had a tree lighting this year, last couple of weeks ago, three, a month ago now, and it was the first one they'd had in a while, and it was packed downtown. And we heard from a lot of people talking about, this is the kind of stuff we need more of. So whether it's using the parking lot at the chapel for movies, you know, kind of movies in the park, different kind of park, but doing something that gets families in there. They come, you just see them coming down the streets to the downtown. So I think there's a real appetite for that. So hopefully, we can keep this momentum moving in the positive direction. Thank you.
And I concur. I, you know, we have perfect models surrounding us of where they have been able to rejuvenate their downtowns. And this one is so ripe, and it's going fairly well, but I mean, it could, it could be better. And I guess I would also encourage the residents of Palm Harbor and the businesses, maybe, I'm going to use Dunedin, your city, as a very good example, where the citizens and the businesses, the retailers, the restaurants, you know, get together and put together a film festival, or they put different activities together, or the merchants association constantly has activities going on in downtown Dunedin. And I think that's, those are models for successes.
Yeah. And to that end, you're right, the merchants are active, the chambers are active, the residents sit on advisory boards. But the overall framework, the public's input is directly that way, but it's also set up through a CRA. So they have CRA director, they have, and I'm not saying that that's the answer yet, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we need to have a defined source of funds and a defined source of help, whether it's the small things like maintenance, of things that we're putting in there that aren't the responsibilities directly of anybody in particular. So we need to keep doing it. So I don't know what the answer is right now on that front, but I really want to push it to get to a sustainable answer, whatever it is, so that we not only can engage the residents today, but in the years to come, because it's their downtown. And there's got to be a mechanism to make it real, whether it's a budget line item or whether it's a relationship with Fix-It or provide a maintenance connection there or whatever it is. But we have to do something that gives folks that framework within which all of their energy really makes a difference.
Mr. Burton.
If you can hold that thought for one week, because next week is strategic planning. We're going to talk about some of these areas. These are foundational. You have great plans, you have great ideas. How do we make them real? You know, how do we make it a living document to where we can make progress in some of these areas? And we have several of the areas around the county. And so that'll be part of your strategic planning discussions next week. And so we will have more to give you some recommendations on how to go forward.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, that was great.
Thank you. Okay. Citizens to be heard. We will start with Donna Davis. And you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts with us.
All righty.
Nice to see you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is Donna Davis, and I'm a member of FAST, and a member of the Good Samaritan Episcopal Church here in beautiful Clearwater. And first of all, I want to begin with a thank you. And I just thank every one of you for all the work that you've done and the projects you've accomplished and the work you are doing in affordable housing. And so thank you for that. And I'm here today for about the ordinance and so that we can clarify and get more information for our organization to go back and report to our constituents. So, as you know, that we had our NEMI action last year with 3,000 people present. And at that, at our assembly, it was with a majority passed to have an ordinance of four point, to guarantee 4.15% of the penny for Pinellas funds to be used on affordable housing projects. So with that said, I'll just briefly go over if some is not what was going to be in the ordinance. And it was that 4.15% off the top of the penny funds would be spent on affordable housing. Language clarified that the affordable housing money would be used in the following three options. 60% of the units building market rate, 40% of the units going, or 40% going to families making 60% of area median income or less. Or all units in a building to go to families making less than 80% of the area median income, and that's around $47,000 a year. And/or, number three, properties for other income levels can also be included if the data shows that income levels have the greatest need for affordable housing. And the final is the statement that the county will set a goal to spend 10% of the affordable housing funds every year. Well, six, we're kind of waiting patiently, actually, we're trying to wait patiently. We did not receive the first draft. It was about six months after the NEMI action, but we were disappointed that only one of the commitments was in the ordinance. But we're waiting patiently for the second draft. And we're here today to clarify of when that might be, and we would like to be able to go back and talk to our people and tell them when it's going to come before you, because we want to celebrate with you the passing of the ordinance. We want to celebrate with you because we know that thousands of hard-working families in our county will be able to have access to affordable, safe housing. And again, we thank you for your work. We're anxiously waiting for the result. Thank you.
Linda Stoller.
My name is Linda Stoller, and I am a member of FAST. My time is up.
She's talking to the machine.
And I'm also a member of Unitarian Universalists of Clearwater, and I'm also here to talk about affordable housing. I think Donna gave you the basic information about why we're here. I know that you're all very, very committed to this issue, and the people that are members of FAST are also very committed. And we're getting anxious, we want to get this ordinance signed, we want to see these plans move forward. And I know that you know what a big problem it is in our county. I know that you know that there are 70,000 families in Pinellas County making 80% of AMI or less, and that they're paying for more, they're paying more than half of their income on rent, and that we have 16,000 families on the Section 8 waiting list, and that waiting list is closed. And these are the kinds of concerns that the members in our congregations are dealing with day in and day out. They're waiting, they're excited about the commitments you've made to move affordable housing in our county, and they so very much want to see that happen. And so we're really asking for that, to see the ordinance, to get the ordinance signed and move forward. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Bob Mahan, and I'm a longtime citizen of Pinellas County. And I'm also one with deep concern for my brother and sister citizens, whose voices are seldom heard in public discussions. For most of the past year, we've been meeting individually with several of you regarding our request for an ordinance to formalize your commitment to allocate 4.15% of the next round of penny for Pinellas net proceeds to the purchase of land and infrastructure expenses to be used solely for affordable housing, which is one-half of the 8.3% already allocated to economic development and affordable housing. You have provided us with an initial draft, which failed to meet several of the goals we have discussed. Recently, we once again presented those specific goals to two of you individually, verbally and in writing. While we are aware that legislation is not a quick process, we need certainty that your commitments to those in need of a safe and affordable place to live are backed up by formal legislation. The single mother who waits tables in your favorite restaurant deserves a safe and affordable place to live. The teacher who prepares your children for The teacher who prepares your children for a bright future deserves a safe and affordable place to live. The man who helped build your home and is now retired in pain because of a tough physical life deserves a safe and affordable place to live. Please, for a moment, give priority and a place at the table to those whose voices seem never to be heard. Let us quickly finalize the wording of the ordinance and bring it to a vote within the next five weeks. I thank you for your time, and I also thank you, as others have as well, for, over the years, having been very friendly and supportive of those who don't have the resources many of us have. Thank you very much.
Greg Davison?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I apologize for my informal attire, but I had to buy a new car starter today. I'm a new resident of Pinellas County, and I was a former Senior Economic Development Specialist with the City of Minneapolis. I'm aware of some new trends, and I call it creative housing financing, that include the increased usage of developer linkage fees, and also an encouraging trend with national foundations also coming into the mix of tiered lenders. So I can give you examples later of examples of where we've had creative housing that included state, county, city, bank, CDFI, nonprofit, and foundation money. And obviously, affordable housing is desperately needed here. I spent three years living in Collier County, and I do not want to see Pinellas go that way, where most people who are working cannot afford to live there. So I'd be happy to answer questions later on. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Next, we have Lenora Faulkner. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gerard.
Can we ask Jewel to talk about when the ordinance might be ready and coming up to us?
We have a draft that I have distributed, as all of you know, that I have spoken with. Legal staff continues to have concerns about some of the requests being inconsistent with the interlocal agreement that you all entered into with the 24 municipalities, which is what allowed the money to come off the top in the first place. To that end, we did reach out to staff with some of our partners, and before even raising those concerns, those concerns were voiced to us. So the latest draft did try to come up with a creative way to make the ordinance and the interlocal agreement work together in a manner that we think would keep the two documents consistent. So there is a draft that we do have that has been shared with some of you that we can bring forward at your pleasure.
I'd appreciate if you'd share it with everyone.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Seal and your distinguished board. I think I'm connected to everyone on planet Earth. In fact, my doctor recently said that. But I went to one of the first FAST meetings in 1996 at Holy Family, and that was John Maroney's parish, Holy Family. And when I had my bone marrow stem cell transplant, my brother was a priest in Holy Family in Mobile, Alabama, and my connections are just like that. And some of you were concerned why I come here. I belong to St. Pete Chamber of Commerce. I graduated from their Entrepreneurial Academy class in 2003 with my son. And I went to a meeting, they asked me to go to a meeting with bankers. John Carases was there, and I asked some questions. He said, "Come back here. What happened to you? What happened to Pinellas Park Middle?" And I told him, "My doctor wrote a letter for me to leave in 2003, and the school board hasn't responded to it yet." So I've spoken at almost every meeting since 2005. And this man next to him said, "Introduce me, introduce me," and they had to talk, and they said, "Stay back here." And it was John Maroney, and he said, "Come see us." And I said, "I'm sorry, I'm just way too busy." And that was 2005. In 2008, he got cancer. In December, I started speaking. He was elated. I would never know that he would get two bone marrow stem cell transplants like mine. And we became really good prayer partners, and he's in heaven watching us now. And so I am here for the children. I'm the most, one of the most certified teachers ever in the state of Florida, biology, chemistry, math, science, health education, middle schools, and the gifted. I lost my job because we won the lottery, so I took a year of computers, 21 hours at St. Pete College and four of graduate school. I only earned $413,000 in 20 years. And you have to pay taxes, so that's like $300,000. My bone marrow stem cell transplant cost $250,000. And I missed so much school because of the mold and mildew without pay. So that's my story, and I will keep telling it. I thank Lordess. I almost lost my house. I had to sell my car. I saved $400 a month. Congressman Jolly got me a ride on the Bay Pines van. My son's been sick in the Tampa VA for 20 years. I've spent every holiday there. I've been on the Polytrauma Family Support Group for 15 years. I'm the bagel lady. Corey Remsberg, that sat next to Michelle Obama, he's my friend. He's there now for three months. God bless all. God bless everyone. I love you all. Take care. Pray for our kids.
David Ballard Geddes, Jr.?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Ballard Geddes, Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. In light of a humanitarian crisis on our horizon, I ask this government to begin making necessary measures to ensure the protection and conservation of the most basic foundation of our society. Based on our remaining viable water supply, now is the time to take drastic measures, beginning with ways of not using so much water and designing ways to return water properly back to the earth, disallowing the direct injecting of reclaimed water temporarily chlorinated fecal nitrates directly into our aquifer. At this point, I feel an immediate deployment of a dry toilet program is essential, accompanied by extensive recycle stations within walking distance of every home. Everything must be recycled. Lawn irrigation must come to an end. Lawn irrigation evapotranspirates and has proven not to be effective in revitalizing our aquifer. Wide-scale use of lawn pesticides and fertilizers must stop as they have proven to be detrimental to the vitality of our children's future water supply. In order to naturally recharge and aerobically replenish our aquifer, splash beds and retention ponds must be established. I find it insulting that our news media and our school system, not teaching the dire consequences of not being resourceful, has neglected to promote and are both apathetic in a sincere interest in protecting our water supply and fail to lead in the awareness of a collective direction of community cohesiveness promoting conservation and recycling. You do not have the right to remain silent, omit, or neglect essential concerns vital to human or basic needs of society. Our government, everything you do, everything you don't do, everything you say, everything you don't say shall be held against you. As a servant of paid public service, the mere fact that you get paid out of our taxes to support bonds as stakeholdings of your post, you have no liberty, no freedom, no rights to habeas corpus, no Miranda rights whatsoever. Your attorneys, working as part of your official capacity, shall be held by guilty, by association. They are not immune and shall be held also be held on charges of constitutional criminality against humanity. Thank you.
Greg Pahn, Pinellas County. The verse for today is Psalms 9, 16 and 17. Yahweh is known by the judgments which he executed. The wicked is snared in the works of his own hands. The wicked shall be turned into hell in the nation that forgets God. Now, this is the latest news report. It says, now, this is going viral. It's called, it said, if you Google this, just white Americans birth below replacement level in every state. They're saying Donald Trump wants to build a big white wall to protect what's left to the white people in America, because they're not, not one state in this country is, the people, the white folks aren't reproducing enough children to replace themselves. And I seen this bumper sticker, and it said it like, it says like, it says, "They say, if the white women don't kill the babies, the white men molest them." So this is what we're dealing with now, is a society that's anti-God, anti-family, anti-men, anti-women, anti-children. No rights to jury trial of your own children. I'm in a county filled with pedophiles. My phone keeps going off, pedophiles in the neighborhood, warnings, they're giving you these warnings, but they don't tell you where the pedophiles live, but you got, you're surrounded by them. And you got this Jim Palermo, you take my daughter, stick him with a Jim Palermo, having sex with a little girl, that's not called consensual sex, under the state's care, and your state, your sheriff's department won't arrest him, Jim Palermo, go check all this out, wants her to sign a waiver that she won't prosecute him, you send a deputy over there where she's living. This is the kind of people we're dealing with. You've sold the truth out for money, and it's going to get you. The truth will set people free. There's nothing you people can do against the truth, but only for the truth. Everything you do is going to produce the truth to come forward. You know, it's amazing how this, I picked this up at Publix, I brought this before. This is stuff you buy for just fruit in the little containers. It says, "A product of China." You know why it's a product of China? Because the people make more money off sending all the fruits and vegetables over to China for them to package it for you and then send it back over here. Can you imagine sending the food to the other side of the planet and then send it back over here and packaging it, then you're eating it? And you can't figure out why you got all the problems, the physical problems you're having in this country? We have a nation now of reprobates and perverts just destroying people for money. And what happens is if you people don't repent, repent simply means change your course, turn around and go back the other way, because you're going the wrong way. If you think the old-school way was wrong, you better find out what's happening here, because this abortion issue, two things, that's number one, that's destroying, that's destroying this country, that you need to stop and you need to get in your public schools. You got to, abstinence before marriage. You got to, you got to tell them, not, no sex, period. No sex, period. Not putting all the little girls on birth control. And the other thing is divorce. Those are the two things you have to stop. You have to, you don't fund it, you don't make no provisions for it, sex before marriage and divorce. It has to stop, or you people aren't going to be here.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 24, reappointments to multiple boards by Commissioner Kathleen Peters.
Oh. Thank you, Madam Chair. These three appointments are all people that have been serving on these boards in the past, so they're very familiar. They've been good public servants, they're doing good stewards, and I highly recommend that you support their reappointment.
With approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Egger, second by Commissioner Long for the voting cards. Okay, passes six unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 25, County Commission New Business Items. I know that there had been some discussion about High Point and the High Point Neighborhood Family Center, but I currently, that's being looked at under Community Development Block Grant Funding. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. So I don't see any other new business items, so we will move on to County Commission Board Reports and Miscellaneous, and I'll start with Commissioner Long.
Me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll go. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. TIBARDA, the Audit Committee conducted an evaluation of proposals for the new audit firm, and they will be making a recommendation to the Board for award on January 25th. We also heard from the proposals from the firms that are interested in being the federal advocate for TIBARDA, and because, for several different reasons, the Chair wanted that proposal to come to the whole board, and so we're going to be looking at that in February. Excuse me. You all, I think, well, for the most part. Most of us were at the funding workshop on Friday, and you heard the predicament of PSTA. And so we are going to be talking about lowering the productivity routes in the system in order to mitigate projected budget shortfalls, and at the same time, we're caught between a rock and a hard place trying to accommodate the request to expand our night and weekend service for the college. We also are setting up an appointment to meet with the school board to talk about transporting high school students on PSTA. And you may know about the Synapse Summit that's being held this week at the Amali. Fortunately, I'm committed to other boards, but hopefully, some of you might be able to attend, because the major focus of that is going to be transportation and our Transportation Solutions, and Jeff Finnick is sponsoring it, so it should be very, very interesting. It's an all-day summit. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council held a strategic planning session last Monday, and we have hired a new Director of Resilience and Engagement, and it's CJ Reynolds. Some of you may know her. She's from the University of South Florida, University of South Florida at St. Pete. And I look forward to some incredible new opportunities under her leadership. She has developed a new initiatives plan, which is being revised as we speak. And as soon as I get a copy of that, I will let you know. I think I already shared with you that the initiative this year is to go forth and try to bring the business community to the table. I do want to remind you that the John Maroney Law Enforcement and First Responders Dinner is coming up on February 16th, and I'm hopeful that all of you will be in attendance. And I wanted to let you know that Tony DeGina, the CEO of Largo Medical Hospital, is retiring from the hospital. And so the new, the president of HCA was at the Hospital Board of Trustees meeting today and announced that a gentleman by the name of Tom Pence would be assuming Tony's position pretty quickly, and they look for the hospital to continue doing its great work going forward. And Madam Chair, that is the end of my report for today.
Thank you. Very good. I'll go on the other side and say, ask Commissioner Welch to go next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll follow Commissioner Long's lead on the Transit Funding Summit. I thought it was very productive. I thought the polling was very interesting, where the consensus is on most of those issues. I also want to just thank my colleagues who joined me at the St. Pete Metropolitan Section of the National Council of Negro Women's Annual Breakfast yesterday, one of the largest in the country. I had a real dynamic speaker. Congrats to Senator Rouson, who received a leadership award, and you all know he's brought thousands down from the state for day of service events to help move our community forward over the MLK celebration. 40,000 folks at the parade, and as I said, a number of positive projects around the county. Unfortunately, those events have been overshadowed by events that happened away from the official celebrations and a couple of miles away from Martin Luther King Street that resulted in a couple of deaths. And as we move forward, I know we all support Chief Holloway and the community who are working to resolve those issues. That has been an issue since I was a kid. You have thousands of folks coming to our community from other counties, in some cases other states, and most of them have real positive... other states, and most of them have real positive ideas when they get here, but you do have some folks that come here just to make trouble. And that's an issue we've been dealing with for a long time, and just wanted to state our support for Chief Holloway and the community moving forward in dealing with that aspect of the MLK celebration. But, the overwhelming majority of folks who come here and celebrate do it in a positive faction, fashion, I just wanna let us not forget that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Thank you. Yeah, just, just a couple of things. Talking first about the MPO, Forward Pinellas. In our last meeting, we talked an awful lot about the five-year tentative work plan, and, and there's, there's enough in there that you can get a real good feel for the direction that the county's going with, with transportation projects. I did get a note from WIT this week that seemed to indicate because of Hurricane Michael's effect on the budget, that some of these projects that would normally be coming around in, say, 2021 are now being bumped back a year. So, there's definitely a cash flow issue because of the, the ongoing effects, I guess, of Hurricane Michael. So, just, there'll be some, some updates on that so that everybody's at least clear where we're going, specifically on 19 Curlew Road intersection, and some of the work between 580 and Tampa Road has been backed up one year. So, I think the Harn Avenue Bridge Crossing, Pedestrian Bridge Crossing got moved up one year. So, so anyway, most everything else got backed up some, so we'll get, we'll get some more details on that. We got an update on the Advantage Pinellas Plan, including a survey. As you said, our PSTA Financial Officer gave us a little bit of an update on what was going on at PSTA and some of the challenges that they have. So, there is an awful lot going on at Forward Pinellas, and we're gonna have a very active year, I think, in talking about projects, funding of projects, short-term and long-term. So, stay tuned for that. Let's see, the CVEB, which is the Community Veterans Engagement Board with the VA, next meeting is next week, so that'll be, I think I've got a conflict with Tampa Bay Water, which is also next week at this very same time. And I really wanna thank you all for the participation in that workshop last week and getting some of your thoughts on Tampa Bay, Tampa Bay Water and kind of the direction we're heading. I think everybody probably saw the article in the paper today about the woes of, the Clearwaters seeing with the same type of project over in Tampa that is just on the very beginning stages. So, there's a lot of issues here, a lot of challenges with water as, as it relates to the, our, keeping our group together intact and working strongly to, to move all water sources forward to be considered. There's just an awful lot of work to do, but we have some discussion at our Executive Board coming up, and also at the, at the board meeting next month. And that's really all I had for boards and committees. Just wanted to say, Fixa announced its officers for next year. The chairman will be Kelly Snow, just so you all know that. If you need to talk to anybody there, please give her a holler. Dunedin, the City of Tarpon Springs, City of Clearwater, all had MLK celebrations. It was really, really good, and we had some great speakers as well. The one message that they've, you know, we keep hearing over and over every year, the same thing about speaking out is one thing, but staying silent is another, and challenging people to make sure that you stand up and speak out for any injustice. So, that was a message from one of the speakers. I'm gonna get a chance to speak at Eckerd College this week on transportation, so there'll be what's going on today and in the near future, so I look forward to that. There's a United Faith Walk of Peace, starting at the Tai Chi Society in Dunedin this Sunday. A lot of churches getting together for that. Not to forget, on your calendar, there's a CNCN meeting for commissioners in March. I know many of you have RSVP'd, but not to forget that. And, let's see, I think that's it. Eastlake Library had a really nice open house for their expansion on Friday night.
What about the orchestra?
Oh, yeah, the orchestra was unbelievable. This is from Eastlake High School. First of all, there was, it was so large, they couldn't put them inside.
Twenty-three students.
Yeah, twenty-three students sat outside, in the dark, playing music for the group that was there Friday. And actually, you played music. I mean, I would, I couldn't play it if I had all the light in the world, but they did a great job.
But it was so, I was, it was inspiring to see these young people playing the violin and the bass fiddle and some of the instruments that you just don't see young people learning anymore, the violin. I mean, it was extraordinary.
It was really good.
They were really good.
And all the parents sitting out watching them and all the people inside looking at the expansion and, and having a good time. So, then they had the ribbon cutting on Sunday. So, they're real excited about that effort. Oldsmar Library and Women's Club is celebrating 100 years this Sunday, so just if you wanna get up there, it's a good, it's a good group at the library on St. Petersburg Drive. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am still doing my little listening tour. Tomorrow, I'll be touring Tampa Bay Water. I've toured Tampa Bay Water before, the reservoir and the D cell plant and so forth, so I'm looking forward to the refresh. And Early Learning Coalition will be this week as well, so I'm looking forward to that. I'm very familiar with them as well, but it'll be a nice refresh. I wanna thank Rahim and Jeff at BTS for giving me the tour at all of their facilities. They've been really great. The staff have been really great, and the 911 Center as well. So, we're moving forward. I'm meeting with some more staff, and I'm looking forward to getting up to speed with every department, and that's really all I have to report.
Lots to learn, and I think, I remember when I first went through the orientation, and, you know, it's amazing, all the things that Pinellas County does and through our, hard work through our staff, it's, you know, you do learn a lot. Commissioner Gerard?
I was just reminiscing about that. Well, I'm sorry, I missed all the good stuff last week. The MLK breakfast, which I'm usually at, the Transportation Summit, which I, I look forward to looking at all the materials, and Whitney took really good notes, as well as the Eastlake Library opening. I mean, jeez. And, and I had a winter storm for three days, so I didn't get to ski.
Oh, no.
But I came back in one piece, so. I know, right? No wonder I could. Welcome back. It was a bad choice of weeks.
Oh, goodness.
And I had no meetings ever since the last meeting, so. Again, welcome back.
Yes. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Area Agency on Aging meets early February. As you're traveling your days through the community, if someone comes to mind, that might be a good someone to serve, either living in Pinellas or Pasco, on that board, we continue to have need for recruitment for board service there, so. Next week, after our strategic workshop, I will head to Tallahassee for a meeting of the Gulf Consortium, and we continue to kinda try and wrap up down to just kind of overseeing the management of the projects and the funding, and that's really kind of what we're down to. Went to my first homeless leadership board meeting last Friday, and we had a presentation on tiny homes in St. Petersburg and what they're doing there. So, Steve Cleveland and, and his group was there making a presentation. It was interesting stuff. And you probably saw, or maybe a few, your aides shared it with you, the State of Florida continued recertified Pinellas County as a certified local government for historic preservation purposes. It's something the county had strived for a long time, and we were able to secure it, I think, in 13. And it's important for us as far as being able to secure grants. If you can check that box off that you're a CLG, that makes a lot of grant opportunities available and which the county's been taking advantage of. So, that goes back to Gordon Beersley and Liz Freeman and Chris Moore and Scott Swerengen, and now our new director, Tom Schofield, great staff that we've been able to have there in that department. I also wanted to congratulate the Eastlake Library. I wasn't able to make it up there, but I know that the crew was very excited about finally having those doors officially open. Last week, attended the YMCA ribbon cutting and grand opening for the childcare facility at the Lealman Exchange. They had a huge crowd there, and not only did they have the dignitaries and the, the construction folks there to cut the ribbon, but they also had the very first baby that would be enrolled in the infant room at the ribbon. So, it was a fun day to celebrate the new services that are being offered in Lealman, thanks to this, the commitment of this board to provide a facility which wasn't available before. So, that's, it was really great stuff. And I also had the chance to attend the breakfast yesterday morning, and that speaker was incredible. I think he spoke 20 minutes non-stop without taking a breath, without flubbing a line. I mean, he was incredible. Not only the message that he delivered, but the way he delivered it was, was impressive.
And how he kept on helping us understand. I thought that was hilarious.
He was, he was incredible from Dallas, Texas, so. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question about, can I ask? The AAA Board members, are you looking for a community person?
We have different categories, but yeah, it's, it's, we typically look for someone who has got some area of interest or background in healthcare, gerontology, specialized law. It could be a variety of things.
Okay. I might know somebody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to add to what you already said about being a Pinellas County Certified Local Government evaluation, and so, since you won't thank yourself, I will. Your leadership there over the past few years has been great, and I think we are, you know, improving every year upon the mission of what this Historic Preservation Board has done, and thanks and kudos to you and the staff, and we appreciate everything that you're doing. So, I also wanted to mention, Commissioner Long and I were at Habitat Ribbon Cutting to some county properties in the Dansville area, and it's amazing how that land is being put to productive use. And I know it was mentioned to me at that meeting that Commissioner Gerard has been talking more with Habitat staff, and I guess my message to our staff is, if there's land that we can make available, they certainly put the shovel in the ground and produce results very quickly. So, if we can identify more properties that we can donate to them, I think that would be wonderful. Commissioner Gerard?
I forgot that. That might have been the biggest thing that I lost, that I missed last week. Well, for me, anyway.
Yeah, I know.
I have a certain place in my heart for Habitat, but the transformation in Ridgecrest is amazing. I mean, seriously, you need to drive through there.
Doesn't even look like the same place.
Just, and, you know, the neighbors are now fixing up their homes, and, you know, there's a lot of pride in the, the history in that community, and it's really coming out now. So, it's, it's great.
I agree. Okay, great. I also wanted to send condolences to the Doug, Doug Spielers family. He passed away unexpectedly, and as many of you all may or may not know, you know, he was in the marine construction industry for many years. He served on multiple task forces for the county, including one on, when we needed new marina facilities, as well as, he was very involved with the Manatees. He retired for a while, and then he went back into the business again and was very well-regarded in, not just for his business savvy, but for all that he did within Pinellas County and the state, so, in water and navigation. And I wanna thank Dave Walker from our staff for letting me know, from the water and navigation staff, because I might not, I might not have known otherwise, and truly, he was a very special person. And finally, I mentioned to you, and I'll pass this on to our staff, but I met with Micah Wozinski, who is with the U.S. Institute Against Human Trafficking, and they have some ideas that they've been working up in Pasco about possibly a human trafficking commission that brings together schools and healthcare and other partners to try to more holistically address this. What I think was, I didn't mention today, but, so, in the United States, of the calls that come in reporting this, the third most calls are in Florida. The third most calls in Florida are in Tampa Bay. And I think we can do training, I, you know, the whole, one of their goals is to try to end demand. So, you know, that's a very difficult subject to, and very difficult to attain, but I, they have a lot of information and a lot of baseline research that I think we could use to widen our approach to human trafficking. And if I recall, I didn't, Charlie, didn't you bring forth the idea of even doing the ordinance to begin with? So, I really appreciate that you did, and I just think now, you know, especially after the sobering statistics we heard today and the terrible story in St. Petersburg, we need to step up to the plate and somehow become more engaged.
Yeah, I met with Lourdes last week to talk about this very thing, because it's really, it's really one of the most disgusting things that goes on right under our noses in many cases. And there were some really strong efforts being made, did you say Sarasota County, I think, or is it, I can't remember, the outside group that was very active in, in this issue. So, I think we can deal with this issue on so many different fronts, but I think it, we need to, however we can organize that effort, I think it'd be awesome.
And, you know, interestingly enough, and sadly enough, I think it's on our citizens' minds as well, because I've had, I've been to different places, and people have brought it up as something that they really want us to address, and that they're very concerned about this going on in our county. Commissioner Gerard?
Well, can I just say, you know, I've worked with homeless teens for many years, and they are the group that gets recruited. The ones in foster care, long-term foster care, and homeless kids, and, you know, whatever we can do to, to help kids out that are on the street, because there are very few ways for them to support themselves other than engaging in that. And it's very easy for them to get sucked in.
Yeah. And shining a light bright on this thing is just, I don't know how we do it, but it's gonna be continuing, it's a continuing effort, but we, we can't do enough, I don't think, so.
Well, and you all may not remember, but the City of Clearwater Police Department had one of the first trafficking units in all of the United States, and I thought it was still going, and it's not. And so, I'll, if it's okay with you all, I'll work with Lourdes, and we'll see if we can put more of a framework around this and bring it back to you at a future date.
Yeah, and there are some very involved people in the community. They, they had a couple of successive grants, I think, that supported the trafficking task force, but they did some really nice work and coordinated work between the nonprofits and the police departments and the FBI and, you know, and ICE even. So, if we could do something to bring it back together.
It seems like it, we need to be bringing the, the agencies and the connections together because it's just.
Yeah, there's a big void there.
There is a void.
It's not another one, we wanna be leading the state in, you know, like you said, Tampa Bay areas. The effort we do, but the, the results that we've got now are not acceptable.
It's been on that for at least 10 years.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That's all from me at the present time. We will come back at 6 o'clock, so we are, we're really adjourned, and we'll look forward to our evening meeting.